Encouraged it. And I'm also like pretty involved in the music department. I do chamber choir and I also do theater. And I did chorus and theater here a little bit, but I didn't like it was just for fun. So I was really nervous to do it in high school. But they have this thing in the fall that's a student run like theater group and anybody can audition. Like you don't even like, you don't even have to have any experience and everybody automatically gets in. And it's just like they foster a community and a way to meet people without any sort of pressure of like not making it. Cause there's like other shows like the musical is more like competitive, but they have like other options that aren't competitive. Like just to foster friendships. And like my freshman year, there's this thing like all state choir that you can audition for and compete like with the state. And my music teacher like encouraged me to do it my freshman year and I was terrified. But she like worked with me twice a week after school, like gave me voice lessons like for free. And I think that just says a lot about like the teachers at Concord High is that most of the ones that I've had do much more than just teaching. Like they're people and they're there for us like, and they go above and beyond just teaching their class. So.
Yeah. Even with classes, like you don't necessarily have to have like a huge skill set. Like this year I took biology and I have like a somewhat understanding of biology. I took it in G S obviously because it's a course program. So I had that knowledge of biology, but like I was like scared that like I didn't have enough where I would like fail or like not do well in the class. But I'm just both she's a biology teacher over there and like it's been my favorite class. Like I plan to major in biology in college. Like I just think it's so welcoming and like they really want you to learn. They want you to succeed. And I think that like goes for all of you.
Jeff?
Um, one question for you guys. So I heard a lot about the extracurriculars and CRTC. As far as the course offerings within Concord, you know, outside of CRTC, do you guys feel like you've had, you know, ample opportunity to, you know, pursue the courses that you're interested in, you know, is a course, you know, and the courses that you wish were available to you, feel like it's lacking? You know, how's the experience been outside of extracurriculars and CRTC?
So I honestly think that there's certain classes that I that every year when I go to do course selection, I'm picking between so many different classes. And I wish I had more time to take all of the classes that were offered there. Every year I've had a really full schedule because I want to take so many classes that are offered through CHS. And there's still more that didn't be wasn't able to take. So I think that there's really a variety.
In addition to that, like I notice every year there's a bunch of different gym classes and I'm not the most sympathetic and I don't love gym classes, but I find myself struggling to like get the gym classes I want without like squeezing out other classes. Because there's dance and there's yoga and yoga too. And I like every year I'm like, oh, I want to take this. I want to take this. And I don't have like, there seems to be like not enough room for gym classes, which is just random for me because I don't like gym. And then art classes too. Like I want to take all these art classes. Like I feel like there's a lot of stuff like that where it's like you wouldn't even think about it. But see in the course selection, like wow, that sounds really fun and interesting. It is when you actually take them like great classes.
There are so many like courses you need to get CHS. But I also think that like your counselors helping narrow that down and like the counselors have been like a huge help. Cause it just for me, um, just deciding like what classes are going to help set me up for my future best and like like recommending of like this class might not be the most important class for you to take or do. Maybe take this one instead. I think that like hugely.
I think that with as far as classes go, especially I feel like CRTC, there's really whatever you want to do, like whatever you think that you want to pursue. There's the class, there's either a class for it or a class that will help you with a skill that's required for it. And to be honest, I feel like even if you, even if you think something one year and then next year you think, oh, well, I don't want to, I don't, I want to pursue something else. It's, it's really a good opportunity like to you can really, um, you can switch really easily. You can like switch whatever you're looking at, like where, wherever you're going for, you can take classes for.
A lot of you have taken classes within CRTC. And I just got like a hand raised for everybody that's utilized CRTC. Which is excellent. So that's I think something maybe for the CRTC students. Having access to the program that CRTC offers is, I mean, what, what's been your experience with that? And maybe found value in that as a student for helping you kind of progress towards the future. And maybe help them identify what you want to do and direction you want to go in life.
Yeah, I can start that one. Um, so this senior year, I, I do the construction trades program and I did it my junior year and this senior year, me and Mr. Rothberg, we set up a, which is really helpful. We set up a plan to narrow it on electrical. That's what I want to do. And we actually, um, two of my courses that counted as high school credits was an online electrical class for me. And doing a work-based learning program where I work for a company and I do a log every single week of what I'm learning and what I'm doing and everything else. And that's extremely helpful for me. I was able to finish my, um, year one electrical class, both, um, school hours and on the job hours out of the way in my senior year of high school. I got to finish year one of electrical, which is huge for me because quicker you get licensed in electrical, the more money you make. So. And that's huge. I can't get that anywhere.
I had, um, I think CRTC is really important because I remember sophomore year, I was really interested in culinary. So I decided to do the culinary program through CRTC. It was amazing. Um, but I did realize that that maybe wasn't the path that I wanted to go, which I think is really good to know in high school. And so junior year I ended up going into health science one and right now I'm in health science two. There's so many opportunities through that. I ended up getting anatomy and physiology through NHTI through there. And now I'm getting my EMT certification. And over the summer too, um, Mr. Bowman, who's my main teacher for my EMT class, has always tried to line up opportunities for me. I've done a lot of shadowing in the hospital. I had a summer, six week summer internship at Dartmouth Hitchcock over the past summer, where I got to go and see so many things. And that's where I realized that I wanted to spend most of my time in pediatrics. Cause that's why I spent most of my time. I really loved it there. And I think that's really cool, the way that it mixes learning with work-based opportunities. Because just like you won't really get that opportunity anywhere else.
I'm also excited. Um, and so I just went on health science one. And it was like, I knew I wanted to do something in the medical field. Like I've always like had an affinity for helping people. And so I wanted to be a nurse, but for that I would be an ophthalmologist at Paris Medical School. And I was just like, I don't think I want to be in medical school. And then after CRTC, um, I realized like, like it's super encouraging. Like you can do what you wanted to, like you, even if it requires four years extra of schooling, like you can do it. And Mr. Bowman, uh, he's going to be, uh, he's leaving this year unfortunately, but, um, I'm planning on doing ELO next year, which is extended learning opportunity, specifically designed around ophthalmology. So because I have a passion at Concord High Center, I'll be able to do, um, some work next. Like hopefully I'll be able to do surgeries. I know, um, one of the yellow students this year actually like actually going to O R and observe surgeries, which is like so important. And the fact that I get a credit for it as a class, like that's like insane. I just won't get that anywhere.
I'm in the education and behavioral science CRTC. And like teaching is something that I've kind of always known I want to do. I feel like a lot of teachers know they want to be a teacher even when they're young. And I love the program so much. I'm getting, I think, you know, like eight or 16 college credits. I don't remember how many I signed up for, but, um, it's just a really, really good program. And I get to do, um, like sort of like mini student teaching, um, is like fieldwork. So I get to go to Abbott Downing preschool, um, in the lab classroom and work with students and teach lessons and stuff. And then I'm also this quarter I'm at DCS. I don't know if any of you have seen me around on here on Fridays, but I get to work with the, um, Mr. Trong and, uh, Mr. Quinn. And it's just really cool because I get to like be in the classroom, like getting those experiences. And it's like super important, especially because I'll be going to college and a lot of the other kids, um, in my classes probably will have never been in a classroom before. Like from that perspective, never have written a lesson plan. And I've already done that stuff and I just feel important. I'm getting so much good experience that I know that's what I want to do. Like it just confirmed that this is the right path for me. So I know what I'm going into next year and what I'm going into in college.
Um, I heard a range. I think Lauren, you just said something like 10 or 12 credits in one year. Is that right?
Uh, I'm not sure about that.
Sixteen.
In one year? Okay.
No, for the two year program.
And then I heard seven, in seven, you said you just took one year of color, one class of culinary. So right? So it sounds like there's a wide range of how involved in the CRTC you can be. At one end, you can just take one class if it sounds interesting, but at the other end, you can commit your whole year to taking all my, am I interpreting this right? I'm not slurring.
So, um, meant to be a two-year program. So first year, anybody can join. Well, you have to go through a CRTC application. Um, after those students are picked, you're in the first year program. The second year program is kind of, um, they kick the, I want to say the best half of the students, but it's more selective. They pick out of that group of year one students to go into year two. And in year two, you typically get a little more, or you definitely go further in the education. Sometimes you go more advanced into what you're learning. But you can stop after year one, because that's what I did for culinary and I decided that I wanted to try another CRTC.
And I think it depends on the program, how many credits you can get. Because I think my mom pays the money for me to get the credits. Like it wasn't just like free. Cause the program costs money, but I think it depends on the program. Cause mine offers a lot of credits. I'm not sure what the difference is, but it's pretty cool.
Well, one of the things that I'm hearing from especially the CRTC students, I think the other students here later in their high school. CRTC size, it's really helped you identify and find out what you want to do as an adult. Prior to getting to college. For you, you know, entering the trades, which is a great thing to kind of identify as well. But it's helped you identify this for college while you're still in high school, gain some experience and really kind of get a taste of what it, you know, what it's going to be like, which is, which is huge. Something I think that we always, I don't want to say struggle with, but something that we always, you know, kind of, kind of in the back of our minds is we, when we have our students here in Deerfield and then you go to Concord and you continue to grow and you carry into, you know, as adults. And it's an awesome thing, but it's great for us to see you guys come back here and manage a little bit of that feedback. Because in a lot of agencies, you go to Concord, you grow up and you disappear into the world and you do great things. And so for us, it's awesome to have you guys come back and I can't tell you how much I appreciate this. We have more questions for our students. I don't care about adults. So.
I have one more, which is the one that probably is on the forefront of most, I think, parents whose students have not yet made it to high school. And that is the travel time, the fact that Concord is not in our town. Do you feel like you can talk about maybe how that struck you, the sort of fact that you have to spend an hour, half hour or an hour on the bus as a ninth grader? How did you sort of manage that? And was that insurmountable? I mean, you're all still here, so it sounds like it was not insurmountable, uh, which is great. But how did, how did you deal with that?
Um, for me, I was the first stop on the bus in the morning. Um, so so it, it was like a little hard to get used to at first, just like waking up that early. But because it was so early in the morning, um, the ride was like an hour for me. In the morning, it's silent on the bus and everybody just sleeps. So like, that was honestly kind of nice. Like it was just like relaxing. It is kind of like, especially like before I got my license, it was a little bit like frustrating sometimes, like living 40 minutes away. Um, especially because both my parents work, so they couldn't like, if I did like an after school thing, they couldn't like pick me up after. But there's so many other like parents and like upperclassmen who are willing to help out. And that's what I did like my first two years. Um, it was like, I met other like upperclassmen, Deerfield students, and they could bring me home. Or other kids' parents, like people are always willing to help out. Um, and then once I got my license, like then it made it a lot easier because I can leave my house a lot later. I can like stay after school and do anything. And then now I can help out the underclassmen and I give rides all the time to people. So. Yeah. And it's also a great way to like get connected too, like between upperclassmen and underclassmen, like to form that connection. I think that's pretty cool.
I also think Concord is like super helpful with like deer field use. Like, um, Concord has a 21C program, which is basically anyone who needs help, they might stay after school. I've done it myself, but like, I know it's like an option. And they have one of their good bus to get those to like, those students who like can't get rides, but still want the extra help. Um, and I think that like just knowing that that's there and like, um, this will just shit is like willing to help students who live 35, 40 minutes away. It's like super cool. This is what I'm doing.
Go ahead.
I have something on that. Um, I think at first, definitely like the first year is kind of like weird having to go on the bus. But I think, um, I know like everything's mostly in Concord, but we even had like our basketball summer league was at Memorial in Manchester. So it was only like 20 minutes for us. So it wasn't that bad. But, um, I think too, having like, um, friends like upperclassmen, we got to like drive around a lot more and you get close. So I got, I got super close with my team and stuff. And a lot of my, um, friends, like we all carpool usually to Concord because it's a long drive, but very good.
Um, I think that while it, I think that it does provide, um, I think it's difficult, there is difficulty with the, especially for those who don't have, you know, a ride. There's, you know, someone to, someone to give them a ride and they do rely on the bus. It's hard. You know, because staying after school comes, becomes a lot more difficult. I mean, before school, if you need to do something with a teacher, like reassess maybe, uh, you reassess something maybe. But I think that, yeah, I think I agree that once you do get a car, it becomes, or once you do have a ride or you, you can't, you do have a car and can drive there. I think it becomes a lot easier. And I think that the location that it's in is, I think that Concord is a nice place to have the school. I think that Concord itself is nice and I think that it is worth it.
I would much rather drive like 35, 40 minutes to Concord than go somewhere that's like 15 minutes from the house or not getting like the opportunities. Or like as goes in the occasion that you have.
Any additional questions for the students? One last follow-up. I have a duty to you, but this is just a fun quick follow-up. Those of you with cars, uh, that's great. And that sounds like it makes it very convenient. Well, it's still not very convenient, but it's, but it's more convenient. Has there been any issue with things like parking permits? You know, I mean, there's always so much space. There's lots to be parked. Do you, do you have any issues as, you know, sort of a lot of you drive and so, I don't know, but, but do you not get a parking permit? How does that system work? And is there any issue?
Honestly, I think that, um, being in Deerfield could also just be me, you know? Um, I leave my house a little bit earlier just because I never know how long it's going to take to get there. So I give myself a little bit of extra time, which usually means I get to the parking spots first and I get first dibs on the bigger spots. So usually that's nice for me. Uh, but it's just your memorial never really had, I never thought that there was any lack of parking. Um, and actually the memorial walks not that bad, especially in January. It's a lot more kind of relaxing.
Hi. Well, I'm in Jazz Band, so like two days out of the week, I'd have to be at the school at 7:00 AM. So I have to leave my house around six because the walk from memorial is five or six minutes and Mr. Phonepoo is out. If you're like not five minutes early, you're late. So I'm usually the first one at memorial pretty much every morning. So I never struggled parking. If I'm late, I still have parking. Like if you just end up in a different spot than you normally are. So really there's no problem parking, senior parking for a while. I parked in senior because I was with like sophomore year, my brother would drive me in. Or I would drive his car into school. And so I had senior parking privileges sophomore year and then junior. And the walk, like you said, the walk from memorial isn't really bad. The winter is great, but other than that, it's fine.
And like for the senior parking lot, um, like you do need like a permit, but it's really easy to get like in the summer before your senior year, they send out an email and then you just have to go pick it up and like hang a thing on your windshield. And I've never had an issue finding parking and I've like gotten to school late before and there's still plenty of spots. So, yeah.
Are you guys ready for my juicy question? All right. You need to ignore all the people sitting behind you. If you had a choice to have gone somewhere else or Concord, are you at the right school?
Yes.
Yes.
And I want you to ignore the people.
I like applied to go to a private in eighth grade and I didn't get in. And going to Concord was like the best thing that could have happened for me. Like seriously, it was. And I'm not just saying that, like, it really has helped me grow so much. And I'm glad that I didn't get into the other place.
Yeah. And outside of all these opportunities and everything we talked about, it's probably not be something you guys think about, but from a sports perspective, I'm competitive. I'm playing D1. I don't want to play D4. For me, for me, the big stage, that's, that's where I want to be. I definitely win the one and anywhere else. So from that aspect, that's what I think.
Yeah, that's. Being able to study D1 sports, like even my team too, like I would rather, like I just would move up, like I'm a competitor. But like I want to do sports. I want to have that opportunity and like, you don't have to play sports either. So like, I just think like I'm not that opportunity to be too.
Really love that Concord High has a marching band. Like I had no experience with marching band. I was kind of scared, but it's fantastic. But I don't know a whole lot of schools that are super close that have marching bands or even really big band programs. Like we're one of the leading marching bands in New England, I'm pretty sure. And it's just.
I think that I, I really wouldn't want to be anywhere, anywhere in, you know, high school. Be just, just really because like some of my best memories had, or best experiences have been at this high school that I wouldn't have gone. That I know I wouldn't have gotten at a smaller high school, even, you know, even just a little bit smaller. I know the beginning of it, Raymond's a bit smaller, Raymond High. And like even in a place like that, I don't think I would have gotten the same experience at all. I think that some things would change. Like the, the CRTC program, for example, I think that that was a great opportunity. And I think it's kind of changed, you know, my, it's changed me. It's changed like a lot of my experiences. I've grown so much more because of the CRTC and stuff that Concord provides. That I don't think I would have gotten at any other school or any other school in this area.
I just think there's so much diversity. I mean, so many things like you might have seen a smaller school, whether it be good or bad. But that way when you like, you're going to college or you're doing whatever you're doing, you're not like much shocked by like what's going on. Like, I think it's nice to have that, like. So like also there's so many people, you like, you find your people no matter what. And that's what I swear.
Yeah. And also I think like the biggest thing is like scary, like kind of as like a parent or a kid going into like a such big school, coming from a small school. But, um, I honestly think that Deerfield did a really good job preparing us, or at least me like going into high school. And there's so many opportunities too, like, like everyone was saying, like there's some classes I didn't even know were a thing. Like there's like a rope class and they went on like a, a two week hike last week and stayed overnight and went rock climbing. Like I just think that's so cool. There's so many things you can do.
Any other questions for our students? Yeah, I've got one. You guys think about, um, maybe sad games. Think about your experience. What role, if any, do you think the racial diversity is?
Um, this year, um, that ELL like coordinator reached out to me because she was looking for someone to help a student learn English. Um, and I thought that that would be such an interesting opportunity, like both to help him like get acclimated to the school. Cause he just moved here from Brazil. And also I thought it would be like a great experience for me to learn about someone else's culture. And it's, it's just crazy, like hearing what other people, like what other people's lives are like that are different from mine. It just like really opens my eyes and I don't know that other high schools have as much diversity as Concord. Um, and like, that's just one example of how it's affected me. Like I'm sure there's plenty of other examples too. But it's really like opened my eyes and I'd say like prepared me for college and life outside of like New Hampshire and Deerfield, because it's not very diverse here.
Is there any, is there any other questions you want to throw out there?
Yeah, one more thing.
And that's, um, well, first of all, does everybody have a sheet here with colleges? Where to get a company business? So I guess the last four years, uh, what our brand has been, um, like two years ago, we had 87% of our kids going to four-year colleges. And I was really, I would merely point out that last year that went down to 61, the desperate is 31%. Because of COVID, basically didn't report to us what they were doing. But could the seniors starting with Laura, why don't we learn and support how much you were doing up till last week?
Oh, no. Okay. Um, I was in the musical at concert. Yeah, it was really cool. It was such a great way to like end my senior year. Um, yeah, that was really cool.
It was superb.
Thank you.
But Laura, why don't you tell them what you're doing as a senior as well?
Okay. Um, so I'm going to University of Rochester in the fall. Um, and I'm going to major in neuroscience, which is, I'm so excited because it's such a great research school. Um, and I'm also going to take piano at the Eastman School of Music, which is associated with university. So, yeah.
Um, I'm going to Rhode Island College next year. Um, I don't know what I'm going to major in quite yet, but, um, I just want to say, uh, I think Concord really helps me like be feel prepared for college. Cause I used to be like so scared, but, um, there's classes that help you prepare. Like I'm in college comp right now and I wrote a bunch of scholarship essays. So I'm like all ready for college already.
Uh, I'm going to the University of Arizona. I'm majoring in neuroscience. I'm going to be on the pre-med path.
You're going to be in life fiction, so.
So, um, you know, we're clear that next year we're just sending them and just stay home. So I, I brought, you know, half the faculty. Here's the, here are the things that we are prepared to talk about. Some of them we've already touched upon. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the freshman program for next year. Um, we've got a couple of key programs restored to justice and, uh, multi-tiered systems of support. That are pretty fundamental to what we're doing in school. Pathways you've heard a lot about. ELOs early college, you've heard about, well, we even talked about it earlier. Um, we have academic programs. We have the curriculum facilitator from the mathematics department, Chris Brouwer. And, um, we have a curriculum facilitator, Lev Viskus, from the science department. And, um, one of my assistant principals, Kathleen Chalaskis, was going to talk about the English curriculum. Co-curriculars, we've heard a ton about, but, um, Tim Herbert was, is prepared to talk a little bit about clubs and organizations and the Estable. So Steve Mello, our athletic director, and then of course CRTC. And then finally, uh, Kathleen was going to talk about, um, a multi-day summer freshman orientation and just a summer academic programs. So this, this may be a good segue for us to swap the students out for your administrators and, and staff if you want. Thank you.
He said switch.
Okay, so, um, please ask questions, uh, we'll try to, we, we came in planning to keep this relatively succinct and really rely upon your questions and your areas of interest, so don't hesitate to either say shut up or ask a question. Um, do you guys have this thing, five things to know about, um, Concord High School? Yes, okay, so just, and, and I'm not going to spend as much time as I, as I intended on these things. But especially for parents and, and certainly for board members, uh, there's a lot, there are a huge number of implications to the fact that we are a comprehensive school, um, about how we grade, uh, about the opportunities that kids have to complete competencies, about the very idea of competencies, competencies themselves. And the time that any group of teachers takes to, um, figure out what is important for a freshman or a senior to know and be able to do in say, science. I mean, you could spend, uh, seventy three, uh, eons on studying science, but you, you have a semester, you have two semesters to do work in any given year, and so it's really fundamental to step back and think about for the professionals, for the teachers to step back and think about what is it that kids really need to be able to understand? What are the skills that they need to acquire so they can move up to higher IQ courses? Um, we have a new grading system last couple of years, as you know, one through four system, why? Uh, we have one through four system because more and more of the assessments that kids are graded on are, are projects, uh, writing assignments as opposed to uh, what we used to do twenty years ago, which was, um, you know, multiple choice questions and, and stuff like that, so, um, we're, as we move, we're very serious about this idea of competency-based education. Um, it has a lot of implications. It's really important. We're just talking about it at the curriculum facilitator meeting this morning, that we have to set up a cycle of review, um, and continually, continue to make, um, it stronger and better and, and more uh, responsive to our kids' needs. So that's one important thing. Secondly, we, and this is, I, I think, uh, especially for parents, I thi- I think this is an important thing to understand about Concord in this field. We believe that building a sense of community to which every student feels that, that, that he or she belongs is a foundation of academic success. Um, we believe and we practice the idea that, uh, kids need to be emotionally and physically safe in the building, that they have to have a sense that people care about them, that we, that we're working for their, their success. Yeah, I think you heard that in spades this mo- this, this evening with the Deerfield kids here. But that's, has to go for every student in that building. And that's why we have advisories, that's why we're doing so much with, uh, restorative justice, especially tier one circles, that idea of community building at classroom level, um, with the advisories, where you're talking about ten to fourteen kids being together four times a week. Um, that stuff is fundamental and foundational to the way that we think about our school. And it, and especially with all the stuff that, that kids are dealing with over the past couple of years with, um, what they hear taking place in the world, um, I think it's, um, essential that this stuff takes precedence even over academics, because the academics are not going to be successful until kids feel safe, uh, and all of that implies, uh, for them. So that's a really important part of who we are. Third, we feel that it's our responsibility to create a school that is, that is responsive to our students' needs rather than trying to fit students into a pre-existing structure. That's why we have rethought freshman year. Uh, last year we started with a, uh, three day freshman orientation. This year we're going to have a four day freshman orientation, we're going to have three sessions. We don't have any specific information on that.
I do, with the leader.
All right, she's, she's going to be filling, filling you in a little while. Um, and, uh, our, our freshman academy, uh, uh, initiative next year, we're working with a freshman with a pre-existing freshman team so they have a common planning time so that they have relative autonomy about how they use that time. They want to do interdisciplinary things and, and, uh, stuff of that nature. We have hired a, um, social worker just to work with a freshman class. Um, that social worker will do a lot of outreach to parents, um, will obviously run groups for the kids, uh, will work very closely with the teachers again around this idea of, um, making sure the kids are well, um, and everything that that implies. Um, fourth, we recognize in high school as, as a transitional experience and not an end in itself. Um, again, that's what we heard from, uh, your students tonight. Um, the work of a, uh, absolutely outstanding, uh, astonishing, astonishingly successful, um, enterprise like CITC, which, um, every time I talk about it, I say that a lot of our ideas come from the work that that group has done over the years. Um, the, um, uh, work we're doing with the ELOs, you heard some of the kids talk about their, um, extended learning opportunities. Um, kids starting college early. The whole idea of what high school was twenty years ago is undergoing a pretty profound change. More and more kids are not just going to be in the classroom, they're going to be out in the community, they're going to be in college classrooms and that's going to make a one in the way that they start thinking about their futures, especially when you, you're the emphasis on pathways, on grading pathways, abusing, you see a reference in, uh, in some of your handouts, we're prepared to talk about that, abusing software programs like Zello in a way to for kids to, um, see where their proclivities lie, um, see what the possibilities are for their future. Uh, all that stuff is going to make, I think, over time, a profound difference in the way that each and every student understands high school as a, as a part of defining where they're going for the rest of their life. And last, um, and you can take this for what it's worth, this is a nice statement. I know from long experience from, uh, the PH, CHS faculty, Patty, I don't want you to take this personally. The CHS faculty, staff and administration are the best I've encountered, um, over a long career. I've never seen, uh, as many truly talented, uh, teachers per capita as there are in that building.
Outside of DCS.
Well, perhaps. We'll, we'll leave that for further investigation. Um, and I, I also want to say, you can take this as what it's, for what it's worth too. My administrative colleagues are, you know, I, and I, Patty, I, you know, I had Dr. Benty, I had, uh, uh, you know, a lot of.
Also at Concord High School, start by the way.
That's right, he was from Concord.
That is correct.
I had a, at, at PA at Pembroke.
I had Tim.
We had, we had, uh, some really good people over there, but, um, you know, the crew I've got over here is just off the charts. Uh, and not just in their work ethic, uh, in their commitment to kids. Their, their, uh, care for individual kids, for helping our, uh, kids who struggle, uh, get back on their feet and start making progress. Um, it's, it's quite a, um, experience to see this crew work, uh, day in and day out, uh, with our student body. Last thing I want to point out before we move on is that, and we say this, I will say this to the kids in, uh, in freshman orientation again this year. We all agree and understand that the other reason we get paychecks every two weeks is because of the kids. Um, they are the reason that we have a school board, that we have schools, that people get paid, um, and, 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 and that's to prepare the next generation of more important than the jobs they go to, to make sure that they are caring, compassionate and thoughtful human beings. And that's really what we're about at Concord High School. So with that, um, I really would like you to hear a little bit about the work that, uh, Tim Herbert has done with restorative justice. So Tim, can you talk a little bit about that?
I'll just do a little bit. Um, I was here last year, we had to give a little brief introduction of the works that I'm sort of practice and shift in school climate as well as the way we work with behaviors and student needs. So, uh, Mike referenced something earlier, uh, we've got one, a couple of our freshman class, uh, circle of discussions and building a set of community with students. It's, uh, strategies that are research-based that help cross relationships from student to student, from student to teacher, integrating as like a community within the classroom. And the research suggests that the more profound relationships you have, that it reduces the, uh, rate of cut classes, tardiness, class disruptions, um, your academics improve inherently because you're in the class, but you're more apt, you're more apt to ask for help, whether it's academic in nature or social emotional in nature. Uh, so we have a huge focus on climate and school culture and climate being supportive of students and, and using restorative practices as our tool to do that. But we're also using restorative practices to sit through disciplinary or behavioral issues that arise. All three of us assistant principals gone through universal training. Uh, we've, we've adjusted our lens. It's so much easier for us to suspend and we'll see you later at the end of the week or in ten days. You know, for ten days the student's gone, that's the easy way out. But we dive into conversations with parents, school counselors, student or victim and, and the offender and try and drill downs with the need or, or the, uh, the, um, the need or the lack of, uh, what did the lack in that moment that led to that situation? And then what Jim's going to jump into, and this would be a great, uh, prelude in that is that we then identify through our MTSS system of supports what we can do to help a student support and get back in an academic setting, address the need so we don't have a reappearance in the beginning here. So that's a huge kind of overview of it, but the good news is it's really easy slides that I, I printed out tonight, calling in to Patty afterwards, that she can distribute just to give you a broad overview of the, the, uh, paradigm shift we're doing, but, but that, you know, we don't.
Yeah, and, um, Tim kind of already looked into it, but the pieces that they've been, I think the handouts he has that refers to, um, our MTSS model that we have at the school. It's called multi-tiered systems of support. Uh, you may have heard it, it is really taken off around the state and nationally. Um, and multi-tiered systems of support and MTSS, it's not really one specific thing. Um, it's really a framework or a model for how we organize ourselves as a school, um, and how we set up our supports and interventions when needed. Um, you know, the reality of it is, you know, Concord High School is a big school. Um, on a given day, we have, um, two thousand students in the building, including CRTC students, a hundred and twenty staff, uh, like five hundred thousand square feet. Um, so what MTSS does, it really helps us make sure that students aren't slipping through the cracks. Um, it helps us support, um, students at each level and we'll see that in some chapters, we'll talk about tier one, tier two, tier three. Um, of really looking at data and how we set up our teams and our systems to make sure we can identify students, what they might need, and then using that data to be very intentional about how we give them specific supports and also monitoring them along the way to make sure they're responding well to those interventions. Um, the last thing we want to do is just try to, you know, slap a score on a kid and be like, all right, he's fine now. Uh, let's move on to the next one. We're really purposeful about, okay, this student's having an issue within, um, a specific class. Let's give them these intervention pieces that we have to help them along the way. And let's be checking them every four to six days to see if they're making progress. If they're not, it may not be their correct intervention. We might have to come back to the drawing board and talk about what else we have to offer. Um, but it's our system that we've been working at, at the high school since I arrived about six years ago. Um, I also worked at, at the middle school prior to that, so Concord's had a pretty long, um, history of working with MTSS or PBIS, who may have, may have also heard. Um, and again, it's one of those things that we make sure that every student is getting what they need at each level depending on where students are at.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, so you've been, sounds like using or implementing MTSS for a while. Um, I would imagine that with the last couple of years, you've seen an uptick in need, uh, probably, and, um, and so at a school the size of Concord, I guess my, my question is how, how do you feel like you've been able to adjust and incorporate that, that change? Um, in need and does that require aid? Do you have a effectively a full-time staff member, a committee? I mean, that sounds like a lot of work to keep tabs on two thousand kids, you know?
Yeah, so it really is kind of how we organize ourselves and systematize ourselves. So we do have a universal, um, MTSS team that meets weekly. Um, and we talk about how the different systems are working together within our tier one, tier two and tier three. Um, and we do have a tier two team also that works together in tier three. Um, and that really feeds into what, you know, Tim, Helen and I do on a daily basis from, um, our, our commons or our house of students that we have assigned to us at the high school. Um, and within our, our commons and our commons meetings, um, we are talking about students all the time. Uh, we're looking at their grade data, their behavior data, their attendance data. Um, and then if we feel that there's a need for an intervention, we make a referral and that goes to that, a, a team that we have that then really digs into the data and looks at the interventions that we have available to us and says, okay, where would this student might fit for this intervention? Um, and then we get the student, we don't just play students blindly, um, we make sure we have that interaction and, and face to face and make sure the student's going to be on board because that's just not, it's not going to work. The student's not going to buy into what you're trying to, to help them with. Um, and then again, we, we, we monitor them along the way. Um, and most of the time it's, it's successful, we do see positive gains, but again, that's not, that's not all the time. And so if a student is not responding to an intervention, then we, we have to come back and take a look at what is it that we're doing that, you know, never replacing necessarily on the students. Where, what are we doing? What do we have available that we can then offer? Um, to then try to help get students to gain.
I would imagine that you as administrative team can't, can't just see every student, right? And so it's possible that there's some that might be sort of slipping through the cracks, but I would imagine that there's teachers also who are keeping their involved and they, and, and the, the starting a sort of a look, a focused look at a student, let's start with a, with a referral, let's start with a teacher, let's start with the whole faculty is all sort of keeping an eye on these kids.
Some of the restorative work we're doing, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's great, I was.
Um, some of the restorative work we're doing is a proactive strategy that it, the, the stronger the relationship between the teacher and the student, the more likely they have more face time with the student than any, any administrator, school counselor does. Or more likely, uh, I realize there was a need there and it's not being met and be able to address it for, you know, peer system of supports.
I guess in that question, I'm thinking about our school psychologists who draw school charts and I'm thinking about, you know, it really goes from like the teacher had a concern about a student to the commons or to a common staff member, then we're talking about a commons meeting. We took that data to see, well, is this really happening, looking back at, okay, what's the, there's a lot of times they'll say, oh, this student's really struggling, they're not coming to class. And then we'll look and we'll say, was anyone called the parent at the parent's meeting? You know, really that's something that hasn't happened, you know, so, so there's some, we, we're very purposeful about taking those first steps, those initial universals steps for, that every student should have if they're starting to slip a little bit. And then if we're finding those aren't successful, we can then start to look at interventions.
So you heard a lot about, from the kids about pathways, um, that is becoming more and more prominent piece of life at Concord High School. And, and followed as the director of, uh, CRTC as opposed to the principal. But do you, do you folks know that Steve's retiring at the end of the year?
Too bad, huh? People would be pretty happy if retired. Stay somewhere long enough, they're ready for you to go. It'll be that long time.
Yeah, we think.
And, and that Michael said, and his take, Park did something pretty cool. And I, I thank the school board, again, to the superintendent here that, I've never heard of this in the state of Hampshire. Uh, I went in to see the superintendent, uh, fifteen months ago and said, well, how can I help on a succession plan? You know, I've been here a long time. And her response was, we'd like to hire the person to replace you this year. Um, so, uh, we really got in my mind the best person in the state, Anne, and she can talk about pathways in a minute. So she's worked for us for a year now and she'll take over from me on July one. And on July two, I won't be, I'll be forgotten. It'll be, it'll be perfect. So I'm sorry to interrupt Mike, but that's, that people's history too, but then I don't, I've never heard of anybody in the state hiring a successor, uh, for a year. Uh, and it just shows a lot about Concord.
I think we're a little concerned that all schools might fall in. It's a life second.
No, I, I wouldn't be concerned about them.
Anne, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, as you've heard this evening, there were so many of the students here had a lot of praise on CRTC. Well, what we're doing on the high school side is Tim and I are working very closely together. We formed a pathways committee. And, you know, we're trying to prepare all students for the challenges and demands of, of the evolving economy and jobs that are out there. Um, so that starts the freshman year, they're going to be taking in a, an assessment, a personality inventory assessment and learn about their skills, talents, hobbies, interests. And hopefully we'll take that group and we'll give them some career exposure um, through our work-based learning coordinator that they have on the high school side, get them out into the community and, and hopefully, uh, have them plan their future, um, by taking the right courses, building these pathways that will show them that if you want a medical career, but you don't have it in your schedule to commit to CRTC, we have the resources on the high school side to be able to map out that career so that they can plan their futures with intention, take their classes with intention and allow our work-based coordinator to maybe. and allow our work-based coordinator to maybe hook them up with some experiences in the community to help complement the coursework that they've chosen. You know, we're just expanding all, all the, you know, we're mirroring what's going on on the CRTC side, but we're trying to bring it over to the high school side. We're starting out very small with the template of building out the medical careers. And then we're hoping to expand from there. So students on the high school side might not have it in their schedule to commit fully to CRTC, but they're gonna have the same level of experiences that the CRTC students have. That includes college credits. Concord High School has an enormous amount of college credits that they're already offering. And it's linking some of those together. You heard the CRTC students talk about their college credit experiences. Well, Concord High School also has a tremendous volume of college credits as well. And then there's also what's called early college. And that's where the high school student can actually show up on a college campus and take some coursework. And we have a very strong relationship with Lake Region and HDI and Manchester Community College, as well as Southern Hampshire University. So we're looking to expand those opportunities to the high school students as well.
And just kind of a clarification question. So are the pathways and then the, the counselors working with the students on a regular basis? Because I heard more than two of the students said, you know, they shifted direction, like they wanted to try a course because they thought that's what they wanted to do. Is the student then determining that that's not the direction from them? Or are they using these pathways and, you know, conversations with the counselors to try to, you know, shift direction and then realign on, you know, what they might want here?
Yeah, there's, you know, there's a lot of adults in the building that are available to them, not only your school counselor, but their advisor as well, as well as the classroom teacher. So we're bringing guest speakers, you know, bringing them to field trips, giving them all kinds of experiences. So there's a lot of people involved in those discussions. I guess it starts with the school counselor, their freshman year. Sometimes different departments will have career conversations. I think you heard one student talk about English department preparing them for college essays. You have advisors and the advisories that are speaking with students as well about their course selections and plans for the future. It's, it's really a, takes a really, it's students guide, make good choices.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be working on this, uh, probably obviously on a nine through 12 basis, but it's gonna be a real point of emphasis with the freshmen next year. We really want to build that foundational sense with them of what high school is about in terms of the future beyond high school. And that's gonna be where the most heavy emphasis is gonna be on the pathways, especially with the, the software programs I mentioned. And then we're starting to build actual pathways. We are starting with medical pathways. I think the second one we're, we're working on, once that's in place, it will be business and we'll kind of go from there. So the kids can actually see the decisions and options they have as they move forward. So, I'm sorry.
Sorry, real quick, if you could, um, could you explain kind of the, the divide between CRTC and then the high school side? From a functional level, what does that look like to students showing up to, you know, Concord for the first time? You know, how do you define it? If you're going to CRTC, do you have a course though that's strictly CRTC-driven Monday through Friday? Are you in and out of the high school in CRTC? What is that actually?
So the, the best part is the model is Concording, unlike some of the other CT centers in the state. There's, uh, courses are embedded throughout the high school. So it's not just like a West Lane, it's, it's throughout the high school. So the students will have it in their curriculum, just like they go to the English class one period, health science the next period, a math class the period after. So we're embedded in the high school. So the students are rarely picked at as a, they apply. And once they get accepted into the program, they split into their standard and they attend our class just like, you know, the next class after them, when they're just finished.
You have, you have eight, eight periods in your day, eight periods in your, in the structure. A CRTC class is two periods out of the eight. So, you know, the rest of the six, all the normal, like, you know, you have a lot of latitude. What's a selling point? And it's, your question has a lot of layers to it about the two, two entities. Like the power of the model is, is that by being at Concord High, even relative to John Stark or Pittsfield, the other schools we partner with, it's all in your building. So you have no loss of time to go to current technical. So it's, it's very unique what we have because you can have a relatively normal schedule and CRTC. But if you were at John Stark, we'd be eating up 37, 38% of your day versus 25% of your day. So you'd get to drop another class, be able to us. So it just makes, it's a very unique part to have a current technical center in your building relative to another school where you'd have to get on a bus and travel 40 minutes, round trip, whatever, whatever it is. And it just has a ripple effect into what you do. So it's almost seamless in that sense. What Anthony was talking about is his ability to sort of roll with the CRTC and then sort of customize some of his experiences. And that's for sort of later high school experience, and that's another piece of the flexibility.
So we've been talking a lot about, uh, I hear the kids talk an awful lot about their co-curricular experiences. We've been talking about pathways and, and software programs, social workers. We actually do have academic subjects. So we thought we would talk a little bit about those. So Brad, you want to start with, with the math department?
So I'm the professor there for the math department. And we really, again, listen to the kids. Typical math question, we're never gonna use this. So took new courses to the school board this year and financially approved. We've added sports statistics, statistics, global real world, add the course, and a computer science and math course. Courses that are intended for students who, once they've gotten their graduation requirements out of the way, can be part of that pathways. We have a sports literature class, we have those sports statistics classes that we work across curriculums. And maybe down the line, CRTC implements a support manager title. Within the business department, uh, we're starting a business CRTC program next year. So our typical accounting introduction now can go into a business faculty with CRTC where they're getting Excel, some of their Excel, software statistics that they didn't set them up for a job. So we're listening to what the students need out of the math department, react to that, rather than going with our 20-year history of algebra one, geometry, algebra two, I don't get math. But how do we keep them in math has been our goal, uh, over the past five years. As we saw, students looking to get math credits in other courses that have math embedded in them or weren't strictly mathematically based. So we stole that back and said, alright, we're gonna have to base on computers, to learn about the sports field, to learn about how statistics are used in the real world. And that's a major recommendation to all college universities to you. I'll be going.
Before I talk about science, I just wanted to mention one thing, because Anne brought up advisors and your question about kids falling through the cracks kind of got me thinking. And I don't think anybody mentioned it, but we, we have an advisory program. And so teachers and other staff members see, I have 13 for 20 minutes, four times a week. And without even trying, with seeing them that often, I know them pretty well. And for three boys that took the NBA playoffs, I realized they're talking about that, so I'm gonna start talking about them. But the whole time I've been looking at their grades, hey, you should talk to your English teacher, hey, like, what? So that happens too in a very informal sort of way. In science, um, every freshman takes a class called Next Generation Science 1. And then sophomore year, they take Next Generation Science 2. So we kind of revamped our science program a few years ago. It's still a work in progress, COVID kind of slowed us down a little bit with the remote situation we had. The idea is an integrated approach that is more, I don't know, realistic about what kids might see out in the world. So it isn't just, here's some physics, here's some chemistry, here's some earth science, here's some life science. We integrate them all kind of when it makes sense. So we'll talk about chemistry, but also bring in some biology with it at the same time, or physics and biology, you know? But we focus on kind of a hands-on inquiry, student-driven approach, where they're actually doing lots of things. So when the kids are up, moving around, talking to each other and not talking to me, that's what I, I feel like is a successful class. I'm just sort of hopping around, checking in on them. Because we're, we're seeing that they, they seem to be more engaged. But a benefit of a large school like Concord High, we have a large science department. And if you have a program of studies, you'll see, I think we have 20, 20 science classes. And so two are required and then they can choose others. So they need to take more to get their graduation requirements. We have, I think, four, about five AP classes, I believe. And we mentioned college credits, so there's, they can get college credit for those kinds of things through NHDI, but also the AP program. There's all sorts of stuff from psychology to sustainability, new class this year, chemistry of what we eat. Or kids who are just kind of interested in the, how life works sort of stuff, all the way to AP physics, you know? So we have lots of opportunities. And, you know, the, just being the, the department head, I know we're pretty well stocked, you know? You know, we can do the labs we want to do, not for lack of equipment and things like that. So the kids are getting some good experience with like real science equipment, probes hooked up to computers, you know, things like that. And then the tech end department, um, there'd be drafting, architectural drawing, intro to woodworking for the kids who might not know to take construction trades, maybe they just want to check out woodworking, they can be that. And I believe one of those classes, architectural drawing is a, a college credit option too. So we have lots of, again, hopefully we can build some more pathways so the kids kind of know which science classes to take because we have so many. But we have a lot of options for them.
And before she became an assistant principal, Eileen was an, had a work for a living as an English teacher.
She did.
So she's gonna tell us a little bit about it specifically.
And I just, it's interesting, so we too, similar to Steve retiring, we've got teacher retirements here. So we've been in the process of interviewing for a new English teacher. And when we talk to people about what are, what are they interested in becoming at Concord High School, the teachers too talk about, you have so many courses, it's unbelievable. And in English alone, similar to science and math, there are a couple of required courses, but we also have over 15 different electives, everything from sports literature to literature of survival, which is now a partner course, speaking of pathways with science of survival. So we have the sports literature and the, and the math statistics with the sports. And now we have this other piece that we're pairing with science. In thinking about people's interests, we have crime and mystery, which is a novel class, science fiction and fantasy, another novel class. We have two different writing courses, advanced writing, college composition, advanced writing, creative writing. Similar to what the kids said, there are more choices than they have time to take the courses. And so we have those cool electives and then we're able to, because we're a large school, have just as many advanced placement courses as well. So if a child is looking for something cool and, and unique, they've got it. If they're on this track where they want more APs, they have it. And similarly for even social studies, who's not represented here, but they're in a similar place. And it's been this way, what's interesting, for, for a relatively long time. And getting ready for this today, I was thinking about, I had the children of a family who has a nursery here in town and had their sons and their children, you know, over 15 years ago. And, you know, their children were unique individuals, diverse. And one student who went the acting path, he took courses in film study and theater. And another one of the sons was more on a business track and took more of our public speaking courses. So there's quite a long tradition between Deerfield and Concord now as well. These are students who graduated in, you know, 2007 and 2011. And so we've been working with our students for a long time in those capacities and finding them as individuals and following them since, you know? Even if they're actors on Instagram, following them along the way from Deerfield. So I, you know, there are just as many of those choices within humanities. And just as a side note too, someone said, you know, how do you feel about the drive to Concord? You might want to ask us in reverse, if you have sons at Concord High School, how do you like the drive when your son goes from Concord to Deerfield on a Friday night to hang with his buddies? So my, my children chose to be long-distance runners. And Deerfield also has quite a tradition, have some pretty phenomenal long-distance runners. So I've also had to sort of cross my fingers and my legs and my toes when my sons are driving out here to do a long-distance run and hang with their buddies out here. And some of their, their most longstanding friends that they've made in high school have done here in Deerfield. So we come your way too. And so, and that's just as scary as a ride sometimes when you get teenage drivers, so. But it's been a really great connection for them. Oh, can I say one other thing about programming? So the only other thing I do want to say is, the kids that came here today, you can see that they've found phenomenal pathways and they've embraced it. And the other thing I just want to say about academic programming is, just like some students at Concord High School who might struggle, we also have students from Deerfield who are taking pathways with us through adult diploma program, through Second Start, and are accessing other alternative pathways. And I just want to mention that to you, that we have CRTC, we have academic classes, we have APs. Concord also has quite a network of alternative programming for students. And I work with some students in Commons A who have come to us from Deerfield who have struggled a little bit in finding those pathways. And we're now getting them access to our Second Start programming and adult, and adult diploma programming. So it just helps, it's important to mention that too, that we're really reaching out to all the students and figuring out what they need. And Concord students have access to those programs as well.
And I know you've heard a lot, and, and we're happy that you have, about co-curricular sports and so forth. But I do want you to at least hear a few words from our athletic director. Steve Mello is, I'll never say this again, but he is clearly one of the most respected athletic directors in the state of New Hampshire. And we are very lucky to have someone of his stature and wisdom running our program. So Steve.
Thanks, boss, appreciate it. This is my 15th trip to the DCS, it goes above us to cover a lot, call it. Interesting to add to what Kylie said, it's a rich history. I think Rosie might have said, you know, DCS, you guys do a good job. These kids are fantastic. You know, from the Kupla brothers, the Sullivan brothers, the Cox sisters, I can keep going. I mean, we're not, we're not Concord High without Deerfield. And we are, because we start first, in August, we're the welcoming committee. Ellie Cox didn't tell you, I think you posed a question about starting something new. She never played volleyball before in her life, she ended up being a captain, a four-year player, multi-year starter, very successful. As Anthony said, you know, he likes to compete, we compete at the highest level. And we don't compete as well without you guys. I'm saying right now, when it comes to how many titles we get in a row, what, four in a row? Vision one, Cross Country titles, we don't have them without the DCS, so good job out of you guys.
When's the state champion first to win one of those?
Uh, I think five, I think it's pretty good. We're, we're very proud of what we do, but, you know, but we have something for everybody. So soccer, I think maybe Steven said she never played before. We have some, we have a place for those, those kids. We have a place for Anthony that wants to get out there and compete against the best. And with freshman team, we, you know, Mr. Corkum is our varsity football coach. We don't cut anybody in football. You know, and I have great memories.
Our boys, I saw, our girls, I saw, I saw the coaching.
My girl, I can go sit right next to her. So I say, I go after the big guy, whoever's the best, that's who I want. So I don't care if they have a pretty pristine job. I have, I have that kind of swing, then I can make that happen. Just, I, I can't speak more than the kids did, I think they did a phenomenal job. We will be here Wednesday morning, I believe. We come every year. You know, again, some of my greatest memories at Concord High involve Deerfield kids. And, you know, once, once they put on the Concord C as part of the family, we don't even know that they're, they're not that they shouldn't be proud of that, but they're just part of the family. You know, one of our greatest accomplishments, probably everybody remembers the great Polly Buckles. I remember being Angelica right here, I think in this room. She's, I think, a three or four-year member of our cheer squad. You know, I can share the video, I mean, it's phenomenal. We're incredibly proud of her. It's what we do, it's what we do. We, we'll be here Wednesday and I want to get, if there's 30 of them, I'm gonna get at least 25.
And again, something you, you have heard more about tonight, is CRTC. But it's such a incredible program with, with all of those programs, different programs in it. Steve and Anne, I don't know what you want to add to, go ahead.
Yeah, look, um, these, these nights make you reflect, you know? And I sort of take the angle. These, these nights make you reflect, you know, and I sort of take the angle. And when I took this job. I really had a great group of people there and we've grown together. And when you grow in a current technical world, you're growing with people from industry. You're not growing with people who are trained as teachers, so they're, they're going on a journey together to sort of take their expertise. And, and change, change the way their industry works, you know, give back. So I think you heard a lot from the kids, I don't need to repeat that. But I think that more kids need to succeed. It's a simple way of looking at things. And what we know is that, what you heard from those students tonight, but we need to hear from more students, is they find something that drives them. That they have a voice. And I think what the C R T C does, to the credit of the folks from the academic side of things here. Is that they, you learn your science and your math and your English. And then you need to realize how it works, you know, how do you apply it, how do you use it? And I think the power of the C R T C being local of Concord High School with authentic people from industry teaching it. Is that you begin putting it all together. And, and I, and I always, the C R T C is a, is a elective based program. I mean, where, when I, when I was here a bunch of years back, we had five hundred kids. Now we're looking about having seven hundred and seventy kids next year in the C R T C, the times are changing. And I think that these students find a voice and they begin sort of owning their future. And the thing I think that dominates the C R T C is that college is a vehicle, you know. And I mean this in the most positive way, like, we need to help you figure out who you are, where you want to go. And then use your vehicles with your voice to decide how you want to get there. You want to get there through apprenticeships, you want to get there by going to Princeton, you want to get there by going to H T I, they're all equal, they're all the same. You know, I don't, I don't mean it in a dry sense, but students need to hold their head up pride and say, hey, I'm, I, I feel good about my future, I'm mapping it out. I got great advice, I think I'm being strategic. And for them to realize that ability to assess themselves is really, I think as a parent, aspirationally what we want. You know, that they, they can, they can feel it. So C R T C is a growing institution, it's, it's changing all the time, we have new people come in. We're filled, we're growing, and it reflects the times. We did, I'll wrap up by, we did a presentation yesterday. And I'm going to speak, speak all this loosely. And we have these health science kids who chose the last semester of their year to go out and pursue something of interest to them. And the one girl, seven, mentioned it, a young, young lady who did surgery at Concord High School. And she got to attend like eight different surgeries and it was just, it was just incredible. At the same time, she, she also mentioned she took two college courses for her last semester of high school. And what you hear in that voice, I always ask at the very end, and I don't care whether it's, they're going to construction trades or medical or. Cosmetology, doesn't matter, like, how has this experience affected your future planning? And what I'm proud of is I get usually a ten-minute response, you know, of the things they've done, the things they've thought about and where they're going. And so it's all a system, you know, everything these folks are talking about here. It's a large high school, but with a lot of systems in place. And so students can really find their niche. And C R T C is just a neat aspect of that. And I could talk about it for an hour, but kids did a thousand times better than I'm ever going to do justice to it. It's just a, just a great opportunity.
I always think of your C R T C kids and that sense of identity that they have. I don't know if you guys noticed it, but the sophomore boy, Jack Jewett, was down, he had the blue polo shirt. That was, that is a computer science polo shirt. All the kids in the different programs, they're always wearing their insignias for their, for the programs that they're in around school. I mean, that, that's who they are and, and, and that's what they think about themselves and their future, so it's, it's pretty impressive. The year's almost over, so that means summer's coming. Used to be able to rest during summer, we can't rest anymore. We have to run summer, we have to run freshman orientation all summer, we have to run academic programs all summer. So Kylie, why don't you tell them what we're doing?
Yeah, very briefly, I think it's true. Concord is, is open year round in some ways, and I think that's important too for people to understand. It's that administrators are available, school counselors have summer hours. In addition, we run summer programming for students who have not yet met the course requirements. Competency recovery for all Concord High School students. So we run that for several weeks in the summer. And in addition to that, we did run successfully, and I think one of the young ladies talked about it. Actually, she actually made the front page of the Concord Monitor last year too. And so one of the Deerfield kids, who was, she was experiencing part of our freshman orientation program. Which was three days last year and we're putting to four because it was so successful. And they talked about that a little bit and that it really helped them to get, to meet friends, meet teachers, meet staff members, meet us. And we're refining that and making that even better this year and that it'll be, there's three different weeks. And students can select a week that fits their, their family's summer schedule by all means. But we are going to purposely group them by commons or house, like Jim Corkum mentioned. So a student who is going to live in Commons A for four years, well, all of those Commons A ninth graders will come together. So they also start to connect on a little bit of a smaller scale. Like I said, if there's family plans, we can adjust and, and make it work. But we're going to try to be even more intentional with our orientation programming this summer. And that was all basically team building. They experienced music, they made a song with one of our orchestra teachers. They did art, they tie dyed, they accessed the culinary kitchen from C R T C and made quesadillas and desserts. So it was food-based, which is always a win, activity-based, tie dyeing, music, it was amazing. And so we're really looking forward to that. But Concord's open, open year round and we like it that way, it's a resource for everybody in the community.
I want to hear from one other member of our team, but before I do. What, if I'm going to tell you one thing about the school, it's dynamic. It's, you know, and it's not change for change sake because the kids do need structure. But it's responsive, as I said earlier, to kids' needs. That's where the summer orientation, the multi-day orientation comes from. That's why we bought into being a competency-based education school. Because we know kids need different, different amounts of time and different pathways to, to be successful with their competencies. What I would say to you as a, as a board sending your students, your children to our school. Is that we are always looking for better ways to assert them. That's what we do, that's what we believe, and that's why we're successful. So last but hardly least is our, is our district's leader. And my son, I actually have him in my, in, in my advisory, so Jim, do you want to?
Yeah, I don't know if I would say I'm the district's leader, but. You've just heard a lot of the district's leaders. I'm the, I'm the school board president, I'm a parent, my son is a junior, he's at C R T C, he's in the computer program. He's interacted, I think, with everyone on here, whether they're as teachers, or as administrators. I have the same, I have the same concerns that you do, that's why I'm on the school board and just like you. And I, I just want to, I, I can't say anything better than the kids and that these, these folks have said. Deerfield is an important part of our community. And this is, this year, as a school board president, I got a chance to interact with a little bit of the board. I've been on the board for almost eight years, we haven't done that enough, right? You're so much a part of our school and we have such an influence on your kids. Our school boards need to work together a little more. I'm always available, it's fun to have you come and, and work with us, we want to have the input, we want to hear from all parents. You know, we are, the kids gave us a perfect example. We are an integrated community and we, we need to work that way. And so my invitation is to you to, I thought the questions as to how we could integrate better, how we can transition better. Were the questions that we all need to ask from our board as well as people in the board. And so we're anxious to work with you on that. I do want to say thank you, it's the first time I've had a chance to. You're the, the kids that you've given us. My, my son has several friends that are Deerfield kids. Their ideals, their work ethic, their integrity. Helps our kids, it's a huge influence on us and, and we're very proud and we're very happy to have. And as much as we can work together, you know, we'll do whatever it is, communicate with us. We want to come back to more of these, we want to hear from parents, how we can do a better job, so. These guys have done a great job, if you have any questions for me or for them, thank you.
So we heard a lot about students that are in clubs or sports, how they get early access to the Concord network and they can make friends and all that sort of stuff. Are there things in place similar to the orientation that might help other students that are not in clubs, not in sports. Develop that relation, those relationships in the network in Concord to make that transition into a larger school more seamless?
Yeah, well, well, the two most obvious things we've mentioned, which are advisory. So they'll be with ten to fourteen other peers that need to gather four times a week for twenty minutes. They're going to get to know over time. Teachers using restorative justice circles in, in their classrooms. Again, are designed to create a sense of trust and intimacy and support. And, and those are the two primary ways. I think we've mentioned the after-school program twenty-one C. Unfortunately, that's going away next year at the high school. But that was another place where kids could get together after school. Especially Deerfield kids because they had the opportunity to have a, a late bus to take them home.
I would like to add, Andy was talking about freshman orientation, like, what a great asset that was to us last year. With the, with, you know, incoming freshmen not being in school for almost the better part of two years coming into the high school. Last time they were in a school was, you know, Deerfield Central School, excuse me, school, I'm sorry. It's, it's such a small environment, being in that bigger environment, just like that, after not being at school for a year and a half, what an opportunity that was to us. What an opportunity it was for our transitioning to ninth graders and run that, so we do a lot there, but we, we do also, we. You mentioned like, what about the kid who, who doesn't have a club or an athletic thing that they gravitate to? To start a club or, or what I've, I've started referring to like your interest group. At Concord High School, it's relatively easy, if you, if you have an interest, we reinvigorated the chess club this year. Got a group of kids come to me and say, Mr. Herbert, I would like to do esports. I'm like, okay, so we should be talking to Mr. Mello, it's, it's gaming. It's actually competition and it's huge and they, and they, they found grants that they can bring in, they get equipped for this. And these are not students that are in any other club or sports team, but they came in, they've had their connections through their classes. They, they found a group with really diverse students that came down, nine of them, and said, we want to start an esports team. So we're in the process, we have one of our I T guys who's going to be the staff advisor for that. So there's things like that, that we may have known through our freshman orientation and our advisory and stuff, that there's easy ways to get involved. Or if you have something of an interest and you want to do more of this year, there's ways to do this. In addition to that, he might have mentioned that, you know, twenty-one C is going away, but we are doing a redesign of one of our. In the past, we called it the diploma, diploma academy, it was academic resources after school. We're redesigning it to call it, we, the name's not great yet, but it's getting there, student academic support, it's a student success center, I've been thrown around there. But it, it's really focused on the holistic view of a student, getting them involved in the community, finding something that we could hook them in. And just supporting them along the way and helping them find that niche, so. We have a bunch of things, Kylie, Jim, anything?
I think I just also, I, I feel like our ninth grade teachers are very, very skilled at helping students with that transition. Even if they weren't able to get into something within the summer, whether it be a sport or advisory, it's not, they don't come into school on day one and it's like, you know, open textbook, page one, we're starting the academics right away. I think they really do a very good job at creating that small sense of security with those ninth grade groups. Gives us that chance to transition and get to know each other and get to know the school and point them in the right direction of those different programs that you do have to offer during school year.
If I can just rip off what Tim said with the clubs. There are over sixty clubs at Concord, most of them student-founded. And I'd say ninety-eight percent are run by teachers at Concord. So there's another connection outside of the classroom, kids are in. I'm the varsity club advisor in charge of school spirit, planning a sprinkling for next Friday. I'm touching base with all the club advisors and they're all setting up activities that day. So if the kids Google over, they'll have, be able to participate, raise funds for that. Again, speaks to that opportunity of not in a sports team, but third string mythology, we have a classics club. Creepy club, we have a game club, puzzle club, chess club, it's just so diverse, the amount of puzzles we offer those kids. To find something that they enjoy together.
Thank you. Questions from us? So I always try to recognize and be thankful, so for me, it's important to recognize for the last twenty years. Concord has been an important part of the development of students and kids, so I want to thank you guys for your, your role in that. It's important for us to make sure that we're sending our students to the right place. And for them to be sent somewhere where they have every opportunity to succeed, so. For the history that we have in that, certainly, thank you folks for our students. Appreciate it, myself, absolutely. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Will Thompson. I just paused it. Yeah, thank you.
We have to, yeah. All right, we're on.
You're on.
All right, so we took a quick recess and we're back, so. We have, just to kind of catch up real quick, we have some outstanding minutes, minutes of June twenty-third. Let's get to the board. Second, moved by Jeff, second by Nate, any changes? On favor? Minutes of March sixteenth, purple got away from us, so the minutes of March sixteenth, let's get to the board.
Second.
Move to Jeff, second by Nate, changes?
Yes.
I think there was a discussion about the meeting with the planning board. In the minutes there, if I'm remembering correctly.
Only then was tied to that, no any expansion committee, but that's just the plan.
It was the Deerfield master plan. Yes, master plan, yes, absolutely. Yes, great. My question was, did we decide at that meeting that I was, wait, this, it doesn't clarify that I was the one that ended up being on that.
You did, you, I don't know what's that mean, but we did decide that it was you.
All right, that was it, any other changes? On favor? All right, brings us to minutes of April, how did we get this far again?
You weren't here, I think. Meeting that I was running, flushed him back. Because you were late.
I'm, I'm twenty minutes late, we did that, all right. The minutes of April twenty. It's written, second by Andy, changes, go ahead.
Water cooler, I guess on page one halfway down, said that we were going to replace all of them. Then at the bottom of the page, it said that we were only going to spend two thousand, and I think that exceeded the cost of like one individual cooler. And I thought the discussion was to just.
All of them, yeah.
Get them all done, so that it's one and done, so we're not paying for the tender to come back.
Yeah, we did have the conversation about doing some of them and the decision was to.
Right, because of the financial implications.
Is there a dollar amount that it should be up to or just replacing all of them?
All, we did go over numbers and that that's why we talked about only doing some, but I think we just decided to go all.
Do, I'm just looking to see if I write specifics.
And Chris said on his paperwork, he had added fifteen thousand.
Sounds correct, but I certainly. Just recall that. It's easier.
No, I think that I just wrote down that you approved it, so whatever was on his sheet was approved, and I wrote down the numbers that he approved, so.
Any additional changes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Bottom of. Top of the last page and bottom of previous page. There were, there were those three motions and votes copied, so I think those are duplicates and so.
Talking about when we came under non-public?
Yes, roll call coming out of non-public. And then it says, at the bottom of the, of the second to last page, it says motion by DG, motion by DG, motion by DG.
One was two type resignations, one was sweep nomination.
And then they were repeated under ten on the next one. So strike ten. Or strike after the roll call. I would keep ten and stroke them.
Keep ten, strike nine.
Yeah.
Anything else? Everybody comfortable with changes?
Should go back to the bubbler thing. I have some comment that says funds, we're going to, money was going to come from a fund for that.
You want to balance, yeah.
Yeah, so I think. Send them all, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Any other changes? On favor? Now brings us to minute fourth, I abstained from that one. Okay, Jeff is abstaining, but we still need a motion to discuss it. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff is abstaining from the table twenty. So it's going to be three, zero, zero. All right, May fourth.
Second.
Move by Jeff, second by Nate, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? So that brings us to a very delayed citizens' comments. Do we have citizens' comments? Go ahead.
So sitting here today, I came to this same meeting a year ago. And I was again totally blown away by the wealth opportunity that Concord offers, and I think that. They really offer something for everybody on the huge spectrum and all of these kids talked very impressively about. The number of athletic and extracurricular activities that they participate in. But I think the problem that we've experienced, I'm the ninth grader, for those of you who don't know. And that I've heard from other parents locally is that the transportation is a huge issue. That, you know, you mentioned the thirty to fifty-minute transport time, but our commute is actually over ninety minutes. Our bus wake up is six oh five AM, and I think the school's start time is about seven forty-five AM, if I'm correct. So that commute, I don't think you would find any adult who would accept that commute to work, you know, do any of us. Spend an hour and a half driving to work in the morning? Probably not. So I think to ask something of our children that we ourselves would not do is, is unreasonable. And I think the benefits of being at school and being able to take advantage of all the opportunities there are huge. But if they don't have a way to get home afterwards, then it's completely useless. And I think that my son has a lot of friends that didn't do sports this year, that aren't in clubs, that are just coming home and sitting. Because they don't have access to transportation. And I think we really need to solve that problem. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker, but I feel super emotional that it's. It's an equity issue, you know, and every kid, you know, just as he said, has to have the same opportunities and same access, and it's a huge problem right now.
Certainly something we are aware of and struggle with on an annual basis.
Yeah, and I think there's some creative solutions. I think that, you know. Private transportation would be an option. I think a centralized drop-off point would be an option. And I think we really just need to put our heads together and come up with some creative solutions. But asking kids to get up at five AM to board a bus that leaves at six and be on a bus for an hour and a half is just. Like totally insane, especially as daddy, there's so much evidence that. You know, the health consequences. I mean, I could show up with a big box full of paperwork if you. Want to read about the health concerns to sleep deprivation for teenagers.
Thank you. Any other comments? So next up. A total juggling of the agenda for any of the board members or Patty, do you have anything else that needs to be added, changed, or modified?
No.
We have one consent item. Daley invoices. All right, so we have. Two invoices from Dale. We have our April transportation, six buses, fifteen days. Totaling thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. So wish the board.
Vote to accept and pay the Dale charges.
For April, we're on April, all right. We shouldn't see a difference in Maggie, because it was when we came back from May, April vacations, when we had to go back, we lost that driver of about five plus. Correct. All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the invoice for thirty thousand nine eighty-two fifty, any additional discussion regarding that invoice? All right, on favor? So the high school. An invoice for. Four thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and eight cents, that would be for two buses. And then we have a small. Looks like there was two days ago, rounds are created. What's the wish of the board? Vote to approve.
Second.
Move by Jeff, second by Nate. Any additional discussion on this? Any word from Dale as to us having. Buses or. Any pipeline stuff, drivers, nothing, anything?
Patty has said.
I saw we have. You want to do that now while we're talking about transportation and you want.
It's just for.
All right. Review correspondence. Sorry, whenever we need to self-operate. Let's get to questions.
Yeah, or exact.
So we have a. Letter regarding local publication, I think. Currently, the decision is to hold off initially, correct me?
I would be, so this is, you're talking about the, the, two meetings ago, we talked about writing a blurb for the Dura Gazette. I put that in the, is this the time to talk about that? I put that last meeting, we didn't get to it because it was a work session, end this meeting, ask Kathy if I have the drive, so perhaps you had a chance to look at it. I have to, I think that a couple things, a couple changes have been happening over the last, you know, several months since the vote, we've had a variety of discussions. About getting our word out, publication, communications, those sorts of things. And I, one of the things, one of the steps we've taken, Andy, we did hook up with the town website, and so we have a means of posting. Something, and that would. That, correct me if I'm wrong, that would then, if it's posted to the town's website, then a blast would go out to all the subscribers in town to that. Email if somebody server, yes, if somebody has gone to the town website. Provided their email and chosen DCS as an area of interest. Anytime we make a change to the site, publish a document, anything along those lines, a notification will be sent to that recipient for that full list, really. Okay, do you have any feel on the numbers of? Sort of town.
That's a good question. I don't know enough to talk about it, I guess, Steve, I'm sure that's something fairly easy to get.
I would say that, I think in kind of small changes at a time, I would be interested to try that system. Before we get into and involved with, you know, a new publication that, that's really haven't seen yet. And I would be interested to see how sort of, you know, different publications have different kind of goals and things like that. And so I would be interested to see, before we commit to something like that, I would be interested to try this new step that we've taken. And I think as a board, maybe sending it to that, sending a blurb, having it sent out to the email to the town or whoever's subscribing to that list. Might be a step that I would propose first. If the board is on board with that idea, then is it worth looking at and just approving that document before we can send it?
We could certainly.
Or wait until.
Why don't we review it and then. Let's just pause it two weeks.
During the work session?
Yeah, okay.
So don't, is that ask of me still to talk with Steve to try to get some data?
I would be here, yeah. What kind of circulation does that get? And then anyway, like quite over two weeks, just take a look at that blurb, and if it's, if it's accurate, if it's, if it's fair to go, then, you know, send any edits to me, and then otherwise, we'll. We'll approve it in two weeks and we'll send it. Start with the town.
Yeah, I think it's probably. There's a. Yeah, you got to follow the bar back. All right, so fiscal twenty-two. Superintendent Sherman?
The update as of today was a surplus of four hundred twenty thousand.
All right. Two, three weeks, start closing.
Third, is that the deadline for? To have everything entered, and then beyond that date, Amber started a spreadsheet this year to make it easier so that we remember. What the board votes on for things post that date, because it means either board approval or superintendent approval. Once she closes down. So if something came up, the school could call me and say, hey, we already put our POs in, but, you know, this classroom needed to buy this, they ran out of something, I can help.
So exactly.
So we'll have a pretty accurate.
Yeah.
Number at the next meeting.
All right, questions? Actually, no, it's about the previous E. I had another question before we talked about that, so. Oh, no, we can go back. You got to wait, you got to wait until the next E. There is an email that came out, a letter to us, I think it came out two days ago, I think, or last night, I can't remember. And my question is, I didn't see the correspondence folder, and so does that mean that what goes into the correspondence folder is only since like Friday, since the agenda was meeting?
It's typically if we have it. We initially had said a week ahead, and then we said, well, if we have it, then we'll put it in. I don't have anything that you just got recently, so I don't know what you're referring to.
Okay.
I do. I don't think I do.
And what I want to say, we keep policy too for. The duration between when something was submitted to us, when we will review it.
And in the interest of time, I'm not pressing for it right now, maybe it makes sense to be in the next meeting anyway, but I just was, that was the question.
Okay, I can put it, I'll put it in, Zach said he's going to forward it to me.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, just if you, if you get something and you notice I'm not on it, Zach typically forwards it to me and then the cap.
Any questions regarding the projected surplus at the moment? Okay, facility updates, anybody else? We know, what do we not know? Anybody?
Jeff has some updates from LBA today.
So.
Wants to start.
LBA does three items. The, we got the comments, we got the state fire marshal. For the fire alarm system upgrades, we're making a few small changes to those. They're tweaking the specifications and they're working with Amber on language or battery. That should be ready to go next week for publication. We've tried to authorize them to go ahead. Fortunately, due to this, the construction industry right now, the septic designer is not moving as quick as we'd like. Our hope was to have that fitted on the contract before June twenty-third. But that's not going to happen. We'll have a proposal from the septic designer next week for the design work. We actually need to proceed with the design work, put it up to bid, so we're talking. Month and a half to two months before we're probably ready for that to go to our P. So.
This is a proposal for costs or associated with doing the design work.
Yep.
And that would have to go out to bid. Theoretically.
So I thought we were doing it under our contract with LBA.
We are. Jager using a consultant for the design, but it would be. Kenny LBA.
Yeah.
Right, we're bringing a consultant.
So we'll get the cost of that.
But it's still easy to go out to bid, even though. We need to bid it to, sorry, we need to bid it to segment contractors.
Yeah, okay.
Whoever's going to work.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I thought you meant we had to bid out the design work to get the design work. So, yes, so that has to go out to bid. Once we have this.
Yep.
So, so we'll have the cost of the design next week.
Yep, and then that will allow us to find out to get the design to then give it back. And our planning mentally, you should be planning, I'm being used, the facility, I've got fun running to that. Because of the time. So that's going to be there. Hopefully, if there's a fund. You have surplus, hopefully, we should use that surplus for a fire line project. Silly repair trust fund. We also, next week, will have a proposal, and so we have an automated cost for a full roof replacement. They went up there this past week. Did a couple cores into the roof system to see exactly how it's built and what it was built with. So we'll see those three things next week.
So I think. Work session, I think there's too much issues more. Have to start the work session.
We have work session planning on this agenda, I think you probably, we do have some business.
We have business on there.
So you think that time-wise, we will be able to, maybe for the fire work, we will be able to use the fund balance?
That's my goal. If we have an RFP ready to go be published next week. We give them two weeks from the date of publication to have bids in, and then we're ready to go right into contract after that, get it scheduled. We're going to have to move quick.
If we need an emergency meeting, we can.
We can certainly do that. I think. You can just let. That will be a no, try the time, the returns, so that it.
Yeah, I talked to them about that. The need for that. Just, my concern is that we don't have good response to the RFPs because things are so crazy right now, but. We should be sure to reach out to any. You know, company contacts that we have, company that can upgrade. Posted on the town website, throw it on.
Tell us about construction summary, so frankly, for that type of work. Anybody that can do is going to see it, because it will end up published on construction summary, and it'll flag whoever. Project codes.
Don't have any time.
And then we have, just I guess a little bit of an update, so Thursday is, Chris told me they're hauling four loads of stuff out of the tanks every Thursday. Stuff out of the tanks every Thursday. So it is uh, getting expensive, summer can't come sooner enough, but right now we are scheduled every Thursday to hear pumping. Trying to keep the tank down. It is a, yeah, yes, yes, it is, it's four, he says it's a folded project here on the Thursday.
Do we run the risk of any sort of backup training planning?
That's, I think, the purpose of the traffic.
So it's just preventative, trying to get us through till one weekend, have somebody come.
The thing is, is the load is gonna come off as soon as the students are. Fairly rapidly.
Were, were we able to determine that it was not a leak? I feel like that was a question at one point that it might be a leak.
So I, I asked Chris again tonight, he said there's. Hundred and fifty, so.
That's a lot of water.
Commercial catcher in the bathroom. Just a number and. Amount of stuff. So uh, that is, is what it is, you gotta just keep.
Speaking of that, can we make sure that the? That you do a projection for however many are left so that the POs update us and I talked about that. So that will play into our surplus number when we know that that's in there already?
That was gonna be my question, so if we're paying for these trucks on Thursdays.
Well, it's not surplus, it won't be surplus because we have to pay it. We have to, we're paying it from the budget, which will mean it's gonna reduce the amount we have for surplus because we have to do this.
Do you know what it was costing?
Having the budget secretary here as the.
So I guess just the, just to be that guy, if the. Cause this is like a unforeseen cost, right? So is there potentially an implication on the fire alarm panel if we don't? Like if that's drawing down funds, is that gonna prevent us from moving forward?
No, I think we have between a million dollars that the town voted to approve and then the. Millions we had in there before, which was two. We'll have enough money for the fire line. Worst case scenario, we end up subject deal, but it's gonna break down.
Get hard into it.
That's why I like the apartment a lot fun when we're done. I mean, like, a lot smaller.
And the question is whether we have enough for the roof then. We also need to do the roof. Is that gonna fit into that one million that we're using this for pumping septic?
So in an ideal world. Get the project to the fire panel sorted.
Guess it's that fire alarm system's gonna come in somewhere two or three hundred. That's two or three hundred. So let's just, the number that's on there, so that's a half million. It costs us.
Your side of. Yeah, but it's not, if you, the numbers you're throwing out sound like it's gonna be depleting.
I think we need to get numbers back on something to build it. Otherwise it may be another, an extra year. Alright, well, any other questions regarding that?
Was there anything else, Brian or Kristen from Chris about the facility? Just those things, right?
So we had Raymond Septic, they came in and pumped and it was three thousand three hundred toss. That was like at the very beginning. I believe he switched to Hughes Septic and we have not gotten in.
You probably get slips when they come, so he can add them up and get us estimate.
Alright, that's a wonderful. Okay. That brings us to. Plus accounts superintendent.
So these were, um, you had asked for these couple of meetings ago, so she did them um, April twenty-first. And twenty-second and then May second and May third. Um, so you have the two Concord buses um. PM on the first day it was twenty-five and twenty-two and then on April twenty-second, their AM and PM numbers were seventeen, twenty-two. Twenty-five, twenty-six. Monday, May second, it was twenty-five, eighteen, thirty-three, thirty-two, and then the next day was twenty-five, eighteen, thirty-one, twenty-eight. Um, so. Kelly's concerned, she said that um, numbers are going back up on the second bus. And that they have sports going on right now, so many kids are not riding home. If there's a rainy day or when sports and after school clubs aren't happening, there are more riders. And AM kids may be riding with parents on their way to work because the bus is so early. Um, she's concerned about if you were to try to combine those into one, that it would not be easy. And that it would be difficult, they would be in the position to deny kids in the morning.
Fifty-sixes.
You have to think about your high schoolers though, I mean, when they do the, is, is it sixty-six?
Seventy-seven. Seventy-seven, three to a seat, fifty-six, two to a seat, that's the number that stuck in my head.
It would have to be two high schoolers, so that makes sense.
Yeah, so, I mean it. It doesn't necessarily, we're at the point in the season now, but we're basically. We could have potentially tried to move the two high school buses into one. At least in the short term to fix the elementary problem. As far as the. The five bus situation is working. Their fault. Polish, old enough. So if we're gonna talk about transportation, this is a great. Way for us to probably roll into, I guess it's. See, it's every year, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna say it again. We're gonna get, at the school year, we really are. Marcus is gonna roll around. Just they'll have any provisions to not light us on fire. We have a plan and deliver word, we stand with drivers. And should we start talking to Kelly now?
I don't know that you're, you're gonna get any different information than they give every year, which is they have no idea who's gonna resign in the little summer. That's what happens every year, they get drivers, they say they're coming back, so they tell us we're all set and then a bunch of resignations come in. And here we are at the beginning of school again. Short on drivers. It's just, you just don't know. Unfortunately.
So if I could just go back to the. Bus counts that we talked about. If I'm reading this correctly, those are the counts higher to sports.
Those were while the sports were going on, so those numbers are lower. Because kids were playing sports and they weren't riding the bus.
Thank you. So there's nothing to do with. Board goals and planning.
Gee was not here, so I think it would be tough to pick a date.
We want to table that till she gets back.
I would wait to the next meeting to pick.
Work session planning, so two weeks we have the meeting.
Yes, and we already have, we've already pushed off the math curriculum um, till the next meeting, so that's gonna be sort of business. Um, we have Major Costanza coming from the guard, who is gonna talk to you about um, a contract to have access to the facility for training. Um, I won't get into it, it's not, it's not as big of a deal as it sounds. A big deal, no, but it's, it's not, it's really fine, but he wants to come and be able to answer your questions. So that's two business um, items. We also had um, talked about how doing a deeper dive into the survey data. But I'm wondering, it seems like we need to have another business meeting this month and I don't know that. The building project is that much of an urgency that we couldn't, you know, do two business meetings this month.
So, so the first part of it is, knowing what we have coming. We comfortable using the next meeting as a business meeting? So we'll schedule it as a business meeting. Uh, items on it are gonna be math curriculum, building necessities as far as septic planning, fire planning. Roof information. Then Major Costanza.
The news brief or whatever that I wrote.
And Major to lighten up some of the other things.
Want to go back again?
Are we done?
Yep, I think someone else had something. At this point.
We just heard about the value of summer orientation. I think we were able to offer busing to that last. I'm not sure if it's every day, but, but if, could put that on Kelly's radar now. Coordinate that if we can do orientation, bus in all twelve days, because it's three, four day sessions.
And they, last year they tried to work.
Was it Dale?
They tried to. I think so. Um, and Concord worked with us to try to get the Deerfield students onto. To minimize, but it sounds like if they're trying to put them in commerce. It's probably better that we offer the.
I think it's great, they're trying to break them in. In their commerce.
And if for some reason Kelly can't get drivers, then I would reach out to Concord and find out if they can help us out again.
And it could just be one stop, two stops, one at the playground, one at different places.
I don't know how many people we utilized it. I'm about to guess, alright, um. PTO update. We don't have one.
I thought you wanted to talk about ice cream.
Ice cream. We also, we also, I do think it's important, we talk about ice cream, but I think it's important for us to recognize that we've been on the PTO arena for how long? And, and this is your swan song, you are. Seventeen, seventeen years of PTO.
That's what happens when we have kids. Freddie, you're being retained, right?
We really wanted you to get to eighteen, so Freddie, sorry. Um, so thank you very much. Uh, well, let's talk about ice cream.
Nicole wrapped the toppings that you guys needed, you guys have got ice cream from.
The ice cream people? Okay, do we need plates or not plates?
Yeah, Nicole was gonna do. Gina and Ash and I are gonna come out.
I think we should have a shirt made for you, the Gina and Tina show.
We could do that. Um, so we will be there actually with our PTO shirts on.
Sounded like you just fall and talk yourself. And so just as a reminder for the community, I don't know if anybody's still watching, but. We have a, a ice cream social for anybody in the community that wants to come uh, this Friday at six-thirty. PTO is generously providing toppings and, you know, we'll call it silverware balls and stuff and then. Couple of community members uh, donated the ice cream. So that we have uh, ice cream and. Real set agenda, it's Friday night, I think the weather's gonna be. Pretty decent, so nice and hot and uh. We'd love anybody in town to come down with their families, have some ice cream, wander around, talk, be social. And kinda welcome everybody back inside the building. As a part of the community and folks get together.
Can we talk about logistics a little bit? Until you get here and say, why should you do that?
Let's talk about logistics.
We're talking about, Meredith has a, a cooler that can, how many tubs can nine, five tubs can be in to serve from? So.
Everybody gets a tub, right?
Did you have in mind where you wanted to set up and where you wanted people to be, put some tables outside and serve from inside?
Yeah, we do that.
Serve outside? Does that have to be, does that have to be kept?
Maybe we serve it here then.
And we were gonna put tables and tables outside. Would that be okay? Just to make it easier to keep the ice cream cold.
If we do that, we can open up the side door there and the front door.
You don't want classrooms open, correct? I wouldn't think.
Maybe one, we wanna one maybe on the shop.
Can you think of someone that would be?
Yeah, I think um, I just don't want people wandering in and out.
Is that okay? Just shut the classroom doors and people can peek in and you can see in there, but it's just.
I'm sure there's somebody I can get to volunteer. To keep our classroom open. If they wanted on the swing or.
I'd love for anybody if they have questions to be able to ask of us or staff members if they want to see a part of the building, just to. Be able to wonder about. Yeah, I think it's good for us just to try to welcome the community back to the building, we've been shuttered for a couple of years here.
Worth doing something like bringing cornhole games, something sort of entertainment.
We have any, you think, everybody has anything?
They're not very good.
Put a jar next to the cornhole boards to collect money to buy new ones.
And bring the Legion as well.
It's open to everybody in town, so we're willing one. I hope a whole bunch of the community comes and says hello and. Just, let's all just be a community.
I, I posted on the school website, I posted on the town website, we put it in the bridge, it's been advertised on everything, so.
Well, let's uh, let's hope for the best and uh. We can say we're not trying.
Have a microscopic logistic thing, did we get any like dairy free or?
Would you like to bring it a little?
I think we got ice cream.
We only, we, we did not do that. Cause Meredith ordered from our distributor like.
Andy, would you like a couple buckets of sherbet?
Not for me, there are some of the, the people that we're talking about that might, might come from the Legion.
Obstacles instead of sherbet, probably.
Yeah, because people are gonna want the obstacles to sell the ice cream and we are stocked on ice cream.
I know, who's bringing ice cream?
That might backfire, actually, we do popsicles. We ordered massive amounts of ice cream, we want ice cream to be served.
And whatever's left for the school. Actually, no, on this one, Amy's staying here. Anything else regarding our little ice cream get together? This is a rekindling of the old pasta suppers that we used to do in town. But seeing as it's gonna be nine hundred degrees in the end of May, we're gonna try and look really the same and different. All right, let's give it a whirl. Worst thing it can do is kids end up with ice cream on Monday. All right. What was that?
Did you want the PTO update or no?
Do you have one?
I do.
Let's do it.
We had teacher appreciation week last week. We treated the teachers to coffee cart with donations. Finally, we could take baked goods and donations from parents. Again, we had a spa theme, so we treated them to some. Sash balls and bath bombs, getting lotion and these kinds of things. Then Friday, we served them lunch. We had a lot of volunteers, which was nice. So and they had a meeting last night and elected board members that I was not there for that. And I think that's it.
Awesome. And again, thank you very much. All right, Nate, executive board report, and I think we have something to talk about.
We do. At the request of the full SAU board from a lot of the board. Abby and Amber and other people, she's like a lot more.
Amber did.
Amber mostly. Contacted a couple of different school districts in the, in the area. Concord and Oyster River who own their own bus fleet and operate and run and manage and do all of that. And got a fair amount of information about what that looks like from, from there and put together some potential costs, kind of itemized some things. Just got some, some information there that, that she collected, so. The, this was presented at the last exec board meeting and in a nutshell, you know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money. The conversation of the exec board was around, we're all bringing it back to our, to our respective boards for us to take a look at. It seems like some of the other exec board members were fairly confident that they're, or is gonna be able to do this at the cost that's, that's proposed. One of the comments I think that Amber made was that the districts around New Hampshire, maybe broader, the history is. That schools, districts who have gone from running their own buses to outsourcing it to somebody like Dale, don't tend to go back. For various reasons, but mostly cost, I think. Startup cost of just, you know, starting to get your fleet is, is prohibitive, sort of, beginning. Yes, please.
The, I think it was the person from Oyster River was gonna get, gave her contact info for someone that they actually used a consultant to come in. And look at your roots and the towns and to help you establish a budget. There's a cost for the consultant. That we didn't want to incur until we knew that there was an appetite from all of the districts for us to do that. And Terry Crade, I just wanna say thank you to him. He spent like an hour and a half with Amber, really helping her and giving her suggestions and talking about their budget and. So that was very helpful, but it does sound like it's going to be incredibly costly.
So I guess the question happens on the cost because it looks like Concord's about nine hundred dollars per speed. Operating budget for you, but in Oyster, it's about that, just over a thousand. So. I'm sure there's scales of economy that don't apply, but I mean, that brings our, our Deerfield, well, not again, district or wide media. Our bus ridership is right now, how many students, just the numbers, three hundred maybe, so three hundred, I mean. We're talking two hundred and seventy, three hundred thousand a year. What do we pay Dale for you?
I am trying. So we pay.
Of course, it's sixty something thousand.
Transportation's four hundred and sixteen thousand. We have forty-five proposed, plus another two thirty-five. So let's call that. This isn't getting into special education. But total transportation cost is, we proposed last year one point one.
So I guess this is where I'm confused by the exact order. Was so recent spin this network sounded like it was a non-starter one, because the quick math says we need to be saving money. Long term.
It's, yeah, the startup cost is what it's gonna be.
Well, when, when you guys were looking at startup costs, were you looking at trying, were you looking at going and physically buying all the buses? Leasing the buses and amortizing.
That is as far as she got. So she did not get a call back from consultants to get pricing on what it would, what it would cost for them to come out and look at. Our site and do a budget analysis. So she only heard back from Oyster River and Concord at this point. So that's what she wanted to summarize what she found. So that's what they told her for you.
I certainly, from my perspective, think we need to let the other districts weigh in. But if they opt not to, I think we need to at least pursue a little bit more.
That's what I thought. I mean. Dale is not a solution. It's, it's a thing that's not stopping much blood flowing. You know, I think it's a very real problem when kids are on the bus for an hour and a half. You know, that is insane and it's not an equitable solution. We talk about equity all the time when it comes to education. All the great opportunities that they have accessible to them in Concord can't be accessed if they can't stay at the school. And so, you know, of course, you know, I, I see all the. Cons or potential challenges in here, but it's like the quick math for us seems like this isn't crazy. We've got the land. You know, we're talking a small fleet. Yeah, there'd be some upfront costs, but I think it's worth looking at. Giving the town, the towns always tell us to find solutions.
Yeah, I mean, we would need ten buses. That would give us nine to run and then one of us. We need to be able to cover ourselves. So you would need ten buses.
In terms of economic scale, we would need somebody to run it. We'd need mechanics who would need an administrator.
I think you contract out your mechanical services, a lot of times do. I know we had a contract to a. Shop in town and he was, he just did the. Kept that his shop. Saying we have that particular facility in town, that's not sure if we can find it. The other thing is, is Dale also can provide a logistic service. So we can fulfill it and say, you know, we lease our buses from you, you provide service and maintenance. We'll go get our own drivers out the next day. And that may be something that we can explore as well. Just to just contract a company for physical buses. And then we take it from there because we know. If we're, we're all. Or the driver shortage. We can address that as a special town.
The other question I have to you, Patty, is is this something we could look at doing with? Another town that's not necessarily in our district but experiencing the same pain we are? Or could we also just pursue this with? Pembroke or a town in our district that's having a few.
Yeah, you're under no, every contract is signed separately by each individual district from Dale, so you're under no obligation.
So we have. With Pembroke, we have an formal amendment, shared costs for, costs to be shared. So we got the cost of the consultant.
No, that they, that's what we're waiting on, finding out how much they would charge to come on and perform that service.
I think I definitely want to see that number.
Were, were any of the other towns intrigued or were they all just like? Full board meeting.
We did, I know there was, I was sitting right there, I was screaming and I was throwing stuff. I remember there was one town that basically said it's not for us, like we don't have. No, they used Dale, so. Satisfied.
And Allenston and Epsom didn't really have, suffer.
Pembroke is felt some pain. And so Pembroke probably would be the one to ride.
We did until we realized that we, when push came to shove, almost like here, all of a sudden you didn't need as many buses and all of a sudden the routes were redone. Into this room, so once that happened.
I would know that it's coming.
So for me, I'm not done with this. I certainly. We owe it to the other towns to, to build a way in with the exact word, but if they all decide they want to let it die, I'm certainly not there yet. Obviously, it's twenty percent of the city. I think we had a minimum should at least, we owe it to the community to try to explore this a little bit deeper because we know Dale's gonna let us down in August again. And we're gonna make the same decisions we have. How do we take care of the elementary skills? Staggering starts, we're doing also it's a shenanigans to try to get the kids here. We can't control the one thing that we know we need to control, which is the staffing. So. Maybe we, maybe for the next meeting, we hear back from consulting.
I think she's gonna, at one she hears back, I think she'll prepare something for the next exec board meeting.
But yeah, I think what we're hearing is, you're the exec board doesn't want to take on that cost.
I at least want to know if it's a five thousand dollar outlay.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I'll have her find out if, if they get back to her in time. If it's a consult, this is just a consulting cost or if it's cheaper, if it's one district, those kinds of questions.
Yes, how would we contact Pembroke specifically? Would that come up at an exec board meeting or?
Yeah, yeah, or you could have the, doesn't make the chair, to be joke. Have the two superintendents talk.
I certainly, I think as far as the group goes, we need to let the exec board, because of the exec board process, because that's.
Yeah, but if, if, if in terms of again, sort of like a schedule thing, if we're thinking all the way out to November, what's gonna go with the next warrant? Then maybe having. The actual cost of the study or what, what would make sense to get out of the warrant? We're gonna move forward with this.
Yeah, we're contracted for next year at this point, so.
Take more time to put all these ducks in a row. They're not gonna have Amber Patty driving buses that'll take them.
No, no, you're not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you said that so wrong.
So this is, this is rolling this whole thing out, it's gonna take years and if we're really serious about this, then we want to think about what, get out of the warrant.
So the next exec board is June eighth. I, realistically, it depends on people getting back to us too. I'll ask for that. If they do get back to her in time, the breakdown.
Yeah, I don't wanna like. I'm not done.
Before, but it's what's there by, for the high school transportation, is it? Different regulations or laws because there are high schoolers that could look at private transportation or it has to be a big yellow.
Yeah, if trans, you can look at other alternatives for co-curriculars, but for transporting to and from school. It has to be a certified school bus driver.
It's gotta be a big deal.
Taxi or coach bus or unless it's inspected as a school bus.
When you say the co-curriculars, is that the after-school programs and sports?
I think, I think potentially, I know people have purchased vans.
Like to drive a team around?
I thought, but not to get, I thought that was.
Right, if to and from school, but I think you might be able to, I don't know, but I don't know how many kids would utilize them all the time, it would be. So it's, that's the other logistical issue with Concord, that all the, all the activities end at different times.
I thought that wasn't.
If we can, then we get whatever size vehicle and students might have to wait fifteen, thirty minutes. But it's better than not having an opportunity for that extra break delay, right?
Stomach the driver.
Yeah, the liability.
As a late, what are you saying? This is a late bus.
But it sounds like it doesn't have to be a big yellow.
I can check, I'll check on that.
Yeah, I, my memory is maybe wrong, but I thought there was a reason we couldn't do that. But I've been wrong once in a place.
Yeah, it would just be for like the after.
Sports or extra.
Anything else on that?
Be a great breakthrough.
Hey, anything else on the exec board?
We hired two, two staff members for the alternative middle school. We need three, so we've got two out of three.
All right.
We did not advertise for foreign language for our alternative middle school.
I tried. Ms. Whaley? And I know your voice is hurting, so.
Yeah, hopefully I can get your voice without having a cough attack, otherwise it's, other reasons aside. You know, if I take my mask off, I am COVID negative. I've been tested several times. So this cover.
You're a rough crowd over there, by the way. We got peels. I don't know what's going on, but for two weeks, I'm still water. I don't know if I wanna come back here on Friday, I might get injured.
So this cover, April twenty first and the eighteenth. We enjoyed our time with classroom of the week. Mr. Greve was able to visit with Mrs. Peaslee's class in sixth grade. Visited with Mrs. Potter's class in fourth grade for a week. Mr. Greve did Miss Park for a week in eighth grade and then I was able this past weekend in Mrs. Mosgrove's third grade class. This week we did not have, class of the week actually worked out good that we didn't. We had staffs testing and. Seventh grade was gone and so we'll pick it up again next week. We have, are continuing with our girls on the run, our after-school enrichment meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our baseball and softball, our teams actually been winning some games, so they have had practice annual games throughout the. Month that we spend. After vacation, our, our team brought back in the community for the first time besides the fourth grade event that's happening by every night. But the DCS art show happened right after vacation, but Tuesday after vacation was a huge success. They stopped counting after two hundred and fifty people or something. A lot of people came in to check out the student artwork and there's been a lot of smiles in the building to be back in. And be able to wander around with them, see things and feel some pride. The kids were very proud of their work. So thank you to all the students, teachers and families that attended and to the PTO who provided some light refreshments because you know it is an art show. In addition, we had the return of our ever so amazing talent show. So thank you to Mrs. Swanson and Mr. B for their tireless efforts to pull the whole, whole show together. Hopefully next year we'll be able to do our spaghetti supper again as part of that event. The kids and family certainly loved the talent show. SCA, which is a science group, has started to come in for the, for the month of May. They're working with our fourth graders on science and environmental. They come right to our school, they're in buckets of stuff. And they've been working with our fourth graders on Wednesdays. Thursday, May fifth, Mrs. McConnell and Mrs. Dwyer have their transition meetings at Concord High School. For our rising eighth grade students that receive special education services. It is always a highlight of, of our team to be able to talk about the students that we are sending up to Concord and progress that they've made. While here at DCS and making sure that that continues for them when they get to Concord. Lisa always feels a great, that it feels of pride in, in sending them off as ready to go as possible. She always says that they're ready, they're ready to go. I think eighth graders are ready to go May first. So if I were gonna suggest anything to the board, I'd say graduate eighth graders on May first, just to come out off. So thank you to all our staff and families who supported our efforts with Tricky Tray as well. You know that every teacher participates and families send in items. For the baskets and it's always a big hit and really, it's really important for us to support focus. They do a lot for us here at DCS for our students. Sadly, Mrs. Whaley did not win the pretty purple basket that we put together. Lots of people tried to put tickets in for me, but I didn't win that. So whoever got that, you're lucky. There was always next year, of course. Um, there was always next year, of course. Um, our third graders um and our PTO had a very successful plant sale on Saturday, May seventh, uh, thanks to the third grade team, they pulled together. A great um little program for the kids, they they not only the kids learned about the lifestyle of plant and science, but they also. Took on the economics piece of good and services and um. The couple of people, a couple of adults that were there said that the kids were great, that the adults that came and. Um, got plants from them, asked them questions and they were patient with them and they had to count the money by hand, so. Um, we're very proud of our third graders and our third grade team for that unit. Um, our New Hampshire SASS testing started last week, last week our fourth, fifth and seventh graders participated and this week it's our third, sixth and eighth grades. Um, as you know, our fifth graders and our eighth graders also take the science SASS, so. Um, they are eight graders will first start on Friday, next week is um some makeup tests, um. Somebody from the state will be here, we we're we're being monitored, um, happens. If you forget to hand in a sheet or something like that, also you get flagged, so they'll somebody will be here on Monday to just make sure that we've. Done everything we're supposed to for our testing, um, so we're very prepared for that. Uh, greatly thank you to our PTO and to the Deerfield families who spoiled our staff rotten last week. They had a teachers and the staff had a wonderful week and we greatly appreciate all their efforts. Um, on May last last Wednesday was, you know, we have PD Wednesday every Wednesday. Um, and we've been meeting with our middle school team, um, last week we decided to tackle some low hanging fruit as we're. Working on the culture and climate, we've been working on the results, we um. Interpreting the results of the survey and trying to figure out next steps, what's gonna um for in terms of improving the climate culture. Um, so Brian and Lisa and I, I led the team uh to talk about what are some low hanging fruits that we can start tackling. Um, since the middle school team came up with the suggestion that we now take those low hanging fruits, categorize them. And put some self committees together so that we can um get some work done over the next month, uh, maybe over the summer and and be really prepared for starting off the school year. Um, with things in place, um, also the the K to five, actually preschool to five, uh, fifth grade. Have been working on placement, um, today, the sixth, seventh and eighth grade worked, or sixth and seventh grade, I should say, eighth grade does do placement. Um, uh, worked on placement, we they took into consideration. A lot of things, but including the parent input form that they've gone out, um, we got quite a few, well, about a hundred applies to that form. Um, we share that information with the teams. Um, Friday the thirteen, our fifth graders went on the Boston field trip, we had a wonderful time, Dale Transportation. Transported them to Durham so that they could take the train in, and I think that they are hooked, fifth grade loved it, the fifth graders loved it, they had their own car. Um, they traveled in style, so they just popped on the train, brought them into Boston. Went out, did their thing, came back on the train, Dale picked them up and then got them back here to school, so it was a very successful trip. Um, and this week our seventh graders have enjoyed an overnight trip, they were gone for two uh three nights, two days. Uh, you know, three days, two nights, um. And uh, but they last year was our first uh time that we've taken seventh graders, they missed the sixth grade trip. Um, we certainly are open to discussing that, as you know, sixth grade had major meals here at school. They use the outdoor classrooms, they were here for four days, I think, and the sixth grade team and the kids loved having them here, so. Um, we're, we've been talking about potentially pivoting that overnight trip maybe to seventh grade. Uh, they had a great time, they were certainly tired and ready for when they pulled into the um, into the DCS parking lot. Uh, Monday was CRB and both Gigi and I were not here, um. I I had to leave early and Gigi was is not around, but just quickly, um, I know that the guidance. Uh, curriculum was presented to the CRB, so in addition to our math curriculum, also the board will um also be needing guidance to have that. Um, that um.
Not at the next meeting.
No, no, I'm good, not right yet. I'm sure Heather will come to the meeting after that.
Okay.
Um, and um. And then uh they talked to a date for next year, um, and a few years ago, Chris uh Chris Motica developed a curriculum cycle review. So that every curriculum is going through some sort of process, um, whether it's just reviewing or taking a look at or. Um, you know, tweaking things and um, believe it or not, next year we have no. Not no curriculums for the board to approve, so it's the only year I was looking ahead, it is the only year, most years we have about two or three. Um, but next year there's none, so. Um, just wanted to give that heads up and. And just upcoming, I wanna make sure I mention that our interns are graduating with Friday night from the launch, it's a big graduation day for them. So we're very proud of them, they've worked very hard this year, we're certainly gonna miss having interns next year, keep up with this for the year after that, so. Books will go getting to the given to the.
I have something to add, so I guess this is where.
He did not review this.
I did not. Our eighth grader, um, parents have been planning the semi-formal, um, and they're looking to. I'm not gonna give anything away, don't worry, for all those eighth graders watching at home right now. As you know, the last uh two years, I think, right now, for year. July share, we we've moved our semi-formal to the Deerfield Fairgrounds and the Sheep Barn, and they do a fantastic job transforming that. Um, and all that stuff, um, so they are looking for some funds because this was not budgeted for. Um, and so I don't know if this is a good time to ask that, or we should bring that up another time.
Or I'm the whole body.
Alright, so they're looking for essentially um four thousand dollars. Um, to pay for everything that uh, I don't, I can't say what it is all. But it's catered food.
Did you clear it with?
Entertainment.
Church off to pay.
Food, entertainment and uh two surprises.
Okay, so. So we have a request from uh Brian for four thousand dollars. For the eighth grade semi-formal.
And traditionally, uh, a lot of this money is fundraised, still we're.
Of course, but they lost some, yeah.
We we've lost it.
Okay.
Which of the.
The fundraiser has paid for their trip, they're going on a overnight trip as well, that's paid for. Um, and caps and gowns and that type of stuff, a lot of other things are paid for, but this was not budgeted.
Right, alright, so that's the request, we have a motion to approve. I will make the motion to. Do we have a second? We have a motion, where Jeff, a second by Andy. And this is one of the high points that had a leaving here.
Yeah, unfortunately, this class has not had the opportunity, like I said, they have some major classroom, they have.
So lost out.
They lost uh pretty much everything, fun and stuff. So except for hanging out with myself.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, uh, in terms of educational, which is, this is four thousand dollars for a student party, I don't mean to be the white blanket here, but I mean. Is this?
There's always a graduation budget that pays for all of that ceremonial stuff, um, the, you know, the. Fundraising covers a lot of expenses that's all tied to. Back, you could you could make the switch and say, okay, well, we'll pay for the trip and we'll pay for the gaps and gaps and flip it, it's it's all related to educational experience. I mean, I don't have any more details than you do, unfortunately, but it is.
What is the cost of graduation? What are we doing for that? I I guess part of my question is, it sounds like this sounds like a great experience and and uh. But is moving to the Sheep Barn, is that going to?
Well, the Sheep, the Sheep Barn itself is free.
I think what Nate's asking is Nate is asking if we say we'll pay for the caps and gowns and we'll pay for the trip. Is that equal to the request for the?
Oh, no, the trip alone is like ten thousand dollars.
Sorry, do you want to hear from that instead?
And counting downs is not, I mean, that's.
This could, instead of being for just for, like you said, a party, it's four thousand dollars towards the eighth grade expenses. To supplement what was the full most fundraised.
Um, the the um, this the seventh grade nature's classroom was added to the budget last year, but it was voted down. Because we didn't get the budget, is that?
Default, yeah.
So running default, but just we didn't get that money. And again, this year it was trying to, we tried to put that in the budget, but it didn't pass.
Right.
So this class has missed out on that experience.
Nate, Nate lost a huge part of their middle school. The kids who were sitting in front of us here today lost a huge part of their high school. This this entire group of students. For the middle of, but at some point, there isn't a student that we've interacted with that hasn't had an impact on their education. You know, it's it's a unfortunate set of circumstances, obviously, nobody can make the. Hurry, but I certainly uh. Some of those experiences, they were denied. A lot of education experience is a no kind of.
Agreed, agreed, uh, last time this year, um, we were presented with uh requests for um X thousand dollars of sort of furniture. And building um investments, which I'm glad that we approved. Um, this year we've got, it sounds like we're sending out three thousand dollars worth of sewage a week and we have a roof that we need to fix and our. Our our surplus fund are are sort of spoken for at this point, do we feel like we're also seeing requests for? Library furniture and risers and that's not coming this year?
No, the only thing I would request is roughly nine hundred and ninety dollars for uh science furniture. Um, that needs to be replaced.
To you in fiber.
Yeah, well, I was waiting to ask for that later.
That's what you have to speak on that, right? Not if it's not the board approves it, I'm sorry. Yeah, we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna do surplus too late, but that's that's important, with semi-formal pieces. Fat sensitive.
So. And I think a piece of this too is, like you said, we haven't been able to fund it with the guys, and it's something that we need to look at for future to budget for. Um, even if we budget for half of the amount, like, but last year, we spent something similar to this and we you guys approved. Uh, I think it was roughly like three thousand or thirty five hundred this year for this, so something that maybe we. Budget for half of it and then they fundraise for the rest of it, something like that, but but if we go back to default, we're in the same position where we're. Asking for surplus.
So I certainly think that. We hold on, you know, the decision. Discussion, we'll take the call. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, we're not talking about it, if you wanna deal with yours, a thousand dollar, whatever the law is.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
What do you need?
Uh, it's essentially, yeah, it's a thousand, it's like nine hundred and ninety dollars, but if you wanna round those, a thousand kids that are getting shipped.
What is?
I'll try to, uh, so essentially, uh, Ms. Peaslee, as you may know, her room is not designed to be a science lab. However, she is a science teacher, so it's essentially a a large island that she can maneuver and. And do experiments on and things like that and move it away and bring it up and so, um, it essentially just allows for more.
Sign on different space.
Yes.
Correct, make a motion for that thousand dollars for additional furniture, so. Discussion. So the science trip, Nate's gonna roll with this. All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a moment.
Tell the kids that they have to flush toilets at home. Okay, that brings us to policies. We have. Two of them for third reading, potentially be addressed.
I think there's some things we can knock out, maybe easily, um. GDCD I handed out last time because the red line wasn't easy to see and I did review it, but people wanted another meeting to make sure they can read this whole thing. Are people feeling? Ready for that one?
So can I have a motion to approve or table GDCD?
Motion to approve GDCD.
And second, second, moved by Jeff, second by Nate, uh, everybody's had a chance to re-review.
Yes, I just have a question.
You really will go ahead?
So currently, there's three versions of there, there's the current, there's a third reading, and then there's a third reading approved. Um, so the only one that I can really be looking at is the third reading approved.
The one that I handed out that had the red line.
Swear that.
Yeah, it hasn't changed.
Good. All in favor? Alright, and you wanna take your VHR?
Well, I was just gonna say the next, um, unfortunately, the next two. The BEDGR got in there, but the BEDG didn't, and the EHR got in there, but the EH didn't. So I would like to just wait on those, um, because those other policies should accompany, so if those two. The EHB and the EHR, I went back to campaign and clarified, um, you approved it after the sample was approved, so you don't need. Yours is all set, you didn't need to do anything.
Okay, so that leaves us on JICI, which we'll wait up for Dean.
No, the the J, that, this version of JICI had that little um paragraph added in red. And that was because of grant monitoring that we recited, we had to have that language in there, so you can work on that policy at your leisure, but. We really need to approve the version that we added that little red paragraph to.
Alright, so you're looking for a motion to approve JICI?
Yes.
So, I have a second, second. Question. Favor? And KCD.
So KCD, I would like you to take a look at, um, I did talk about this a little bit. This board, um, years ago. Really changed KCD, so the sample is in there and I think it covers everything it needs to, um, this was, you know, the. It was the greenhouse policy, um, and it it requires people to go through a lot of unnecessary hoops. Um, to get things approved that are covered in the sample policy, um, we don't apply for grants that are not DOE. Allocated funds, you know, that's something that would be discussed with the board, the uh, your policy talks about something up to twenty five thousand dollars. But the regulations are five thousand dollars, so the school board sample policy is means regulations and it's much. Simpler to implement, so if you can take a look at those two and if you have any concerns. Switching back to the School Board Association version, we can talk about it, you can make some suggestions, but that's sort of the impetus for putting that on there.
So let's, um, do we wanna handle that at the next? We comfortable with that? Alright, uh, informational items, I don't have any notes, I'm assuming we don't have any?
Nope.
Okay, uh, do you want quickly, do we need them in public in regards to that?
Um, I don't think so.
Uh, there's a, I'm gonna throw it out this way, this is staff request, it was in the packets, do we need to go non-public or are we comfortable? Right? Public comments, public, do you have comments? None, okay. Uh, we don't need it on public, we do have one staff request of a promotion to approve.
Resignation, not a request.
Uh, vote is approved, vote approved by Andy, who have a second? Second by Jeff, um, any additional discussion? All in favor? That brings us to adjournment. Thank you very much, everybody.